Good morning, this is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for March 8th, 2016. We'll begin with --
Methodist first.
A new case on the appeals calendar just been taken out of order.
One second, no, we're just going to read a motion and then we'll come to those.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Okay, so this is regarding Methodist Hospital pursuant to board review of decision, section 1-12.6 of the board's rules and in accordance with section 666.8 of the New York City Charter. On June 17th, 2014, under BSA Calendar Number 289-13-BZ, the board granted a variance to allow for the expansion of New York Methodist Hospital's site at 473-541 Sixth Street, 480-496 and 542-548 Fifth Street, and 249-267 Seventh Avenue on Block 1084, lots 25, 26, 28, 39 to 44, 46 and 48 in the borough of Brooklyn. The variance, based on the programmatic needs of the hospital, waived regulations for floor area ratio, lot coverage, rear setback, rear yard, rear yard equivalent, and signage. Also, on June 17th, 2014, under BSA Calendar Number 142-92-BZ, the board granted an application to amend plans associated with the previously issued special permit which allowed for the construction of parking spaces accessory to the hospital. On December 16th, 2014, the board denied a motion to reargue or rehear the foregoing applications, which was made by opposition to the project known as, opposition was known as Preserve Park Slope. Preserve Park Slope, with other neighbors of the site, commenced an action against the board, the city of New York, and New York Methodist Hospital under Article 78 and Section 3001 of the Civil Practice Law and Rules. The litigation was settled and discontinued pursuant to a stipulation so ordered by an order of the New York State Supreme Court on January 6th, 2015. The stipulation provides that, subject to the approval of the board, as well as the Department of Transportation, the hospital will make certain changes to the plans approved and modified under BSA Calendar Numbers 289-13-BZ and 142-92-BZ. These changes include, among others, the elimination of the seventh floor of the new building, the relocation of certain entrances thereto, and the installation of new landscaping. Pursuant to the board's Rule 1-12.6, the board may, for good cause on its own motion at a public hearing, review any decision that it has made and may reverse or modify such decision. I believe the settlement and the court's requirement that the mandated changes be reviewed by the board constitute good cause. As such, I hereby move to review BSA Calendar Number 289-13-BZ and BSA Calendar Number 142-92-BZ on the board's SOC calendar on April 5th, 2016. I am directing our staff to notify the applicant and owner of the hearing date and further directing that any submission in advance of the hearing be made by March 22nd, 2016. So on that motion, motion to grant, on that motion, or on, make that motion?
Chair.
Aye.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Right, I'm going to build it back. Okay, good morning again. We're going to do Build It Back, this is item number 19 on the calendar, 2016 1222A through 2016 4120A, the various sites in Brooklyn, Queens, and Staten Island.
Thank you, hi, thank you for having me back today to present on the GCL 35 Application waiver for the Build It Back properties. As I've presented here before, the city through the Build It Back program is helping to repair, elevate, and rebuild homes across Brooklyn, Queens, Staten Island, and a few homes in the Bronx that were damaged through Hurricane Sandy with HUD. We've made the commitment to complete that work by the end of this year and have worked with the city agencies, including the BSA, to come up with ways to expedite the process. One of the big things that impacts us is GCL 35, which deals with unmapped, or mapped streets, not unmapped streets, I'm sorry, street widening lines, just to get my GCL 35, 36 straight, street widening lines. So, we have been working closely with DEP, DOT, and the Fire Department and Department of Buildings to come up with a process. We're asking for a waiver on 2,899 Build It Back properties. We don't think those will all need the waiver, but we want to make sure we cover all of our properties. We are putting in place a comprehensive plan in partnership with them, so instead of going through the regular process where you submit plans to DOB, they come to the BSA and they go back to each of these agencies for a waiver. We've worked out a process in advance where we've agreed to make determinations on how we will cite the elevator to rebuild homes based on the street widening lines, based on the presence of a capital project. If there's no capital project, there'll be no prohibition on where we can cite it related to the street widening line. If there is a capital project, but it hasn't been defined as to where the line is, we will set it five feet back from the front lot line. And if there is a capital project that's far enough along in design, we will adhere to the acquisition line. In addition, we've agreed with DEP not to put properties that aren't within their original footprint within five feet of a sewer or water main, including stairs and landings that are new to a property. And we've also agreed to requirements with FDNY where the building will be sprinklered and have fire carbon oxide alarms and other things related to fireproofing. It is our plan to both submit to DOB and submit the plans to those three agencies at the same time. DOB will be able to move forward with the plan approval, so we can begin the construction project. The three agencies will have 10 days to review the plans, they'll get back to us, and we'll ensure if there's any changes that need to be made, they'll be made and they'll be managed in kind of an entire Build It Back process. So, that's the overview.
Right, I understood there were a few properties that were to be withdrawn from the list, though, is that correct?
Yes, the three.
Yeah, there are three, so, can you read the ones that would be withdrawn?
The three properties to be withdrawn is 1010 Church Road in Queens, Calendar Number is 2016 1439A, 10-8 Church Road, Queens, 2016 1440A, and 225 Baden Place Staten Island, which is 2016 2647A. Those three to be withdrawn.
Okay, that's correct, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any speakers on this? Okay, so, I would like to make a motion to approve these, all, what is it, 2,899 properties? And, but on condition, you summarized what the conditions would be, but our resolution will be quite specific with the letters that came from DEP and Fire Department that stipulate what the setback lines are, the sprinklering requirements, the other fire retardant measures. Okay, so for--
Motion to withdraw first?
Motion to, okay, motion--
Motion to withdraw those three first.
Motion to withdraw those first three.
Okay. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Okay, the motion to, to--
Close.
To, sorry, close the hearing. Sorry, it's closed. Motion to close. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
And now, a motion to grant on the condition stated.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
And Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Go forth and prosper.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, let me go back to regular calendar. Special Order Calendar Decision Items, item number one, 59544BZ, 30 Central Park South, Manhattan.
Good morning, Phyllis Weisberg Montgomery McCracken for the applicant. I understand there were some questions raised yesterday, if you'd like me to address them.
If we're going to discuss anything, we have to reopen the hearing, but I don't think the questions were--
Okay.
--of issue, so I think we could stay closed. And so, I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number two, 9708BZ, 84 Sanford Street, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of Eric Pilatnik, PC.
Good morning, I think we do have to reopen this just to answer some questions, right? Or, no, wait, I'm sorry, sorry, take it back.
Okay.
Okay, don't need to, okay.
Good?
Yeah, I was confusing this with another one. Okay, so, the only thing that we're going to do is, I'd like to make a motion that includes monitoring of the SSDS by the owner, where they will send us reports, let's say, every six months on the operation of the SSDS. And then eventually, when they bring their other applications for the rest of their schools, that we'll tie it all together into one big monitoring program that the Office of Environmental Remediation would manage, but we can't do that on such a small aspect here. In the, the other thing is, I'd like to make a, given the history of the site, I think this approval should be on sort of a short term. So, I'd say maybe two years, people have a two-year term. And we have condition that there be regular pickups of the garbage, that the trash be kept inside the building until pickup, that during that two years, we're going to see all the violations cleared up, a certificate of occupancy, all of those things that make this a really proper, safe site. And also, reaching out to the Department of Transportation for school crossing and signage to be installed. Okay, school crossing to be arranged and signage to be installed. Okay, would be okay with that? So, for a motion to grant on those conditions?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Continue hearing items, 52676BZ, 1492 Victory Boulevard, Staten Island. Is anybody here for this? Is it adjournment?
Yeah, they want to adjourn, but they didn't say, they just said late April, so we could adjourn it to April 26th.
Yep.
Yep, within a submission on April 6th.
Item number four, 38280BZ, 316318 East 91st Street, Manhattan.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner is Frederick A. Becker. My assistant attended the hearing review session yesterday. I think I have responses to several of the issues and a few questions as well. Regarding the accessibility, we will provide a handicap lift along the stairwells as a condition, and also provide the wheelchair seating in a designated part of the theater as well. I will, I've spoken to the owner, we're trying to provide a fire alarm service letter similar to the sprinkler letter, and I'll speak to Cicaduto about the Fire Department weighing in on it as well. I, the elevation sheet, I was a little confused, didn't understand exactly what the question was.
It's that it's not, it's very hard to read, but you need to submit the plans altogether. So, when you submit a new sheet, you should submit the other sheets with it, just because they travel together.
No, no, no problem, we'll give you more legible plans and the whole set. The PA drawings you, I believe, were approved, you said the preparation was unclear on them?
No, you can't tell that they were approved drawings, there's no indication.
Okay, so you have to, that's the question mark. I believe the egress was reviewed, the first-floor office is accessory to the uses, it's not a separate use, so it's just, you know, for one or two people to do--
Sorry, which first floor?
You had an issue about first-floor office for egress, that was the question.
No, there's a whole floor underneath that was the contractor, it sits underneath the auditorium.
Right, but that is street level.
At street level, isn't it a large space, not just an office? It says its choir practice goes on there and things like that.
Right, right, okay, you said the, it said first floor, so I was a little confused.
Yeah, first floor, what used to be a contractor's office, whatever that means.
Right, right, exactly, we can have, I'll ask whether it is, I mean, it's not used for the capacity that the theater is used for, it's a nominal capacity, but we can check into that.
But, okay, so, it's, the issue is, if it's for choir practice, I don't know how many people are in the choir, right?
Not a lot, it's a very small choir. I mean, you're talking about, this is used maybe a couple of times a week for a dozen or so people, we're not talking, not the Harlem Boys Choir.
Okay, so you'll find out more about that, the issue is, when everyone is egressing through the same ground floor lobby, do you have enough exit capacity?
Okay, the lower level is not used in conjunction with the upper, the theater's use, the lower level is not in use by law. Non-simultaneous occupancy, so the practice, the use of that lower level is during the week, it's not, there wouldn't be choir practice during a theater, theatrical production, there wouldn't be choir practice during service because they would be upstairs, so it's non-simultaneous.
Okay, but for us not to have to have that as a condition, because there's no reason to limit the use if it turns out they want to have other kinds of, let's say, non-competing activities, right, you know, something quiet down below, you shouldn't be limited, otherwise we'd make that a condition to grant, so just find out about the egress.
I'll find out, but we probably would accept that condition.
Okay.
Anything further?
I don't think so. We want Fire Department to comment on this, but I think that was it. Were there any other questions? Okay, are there any speakers on this? Is Fire Department here?
Yes.
Jack Obama?
Yes, John Ackland, Fire Department, I heard some substance that there was supposed to be a Fire Department sprinkler forthcoming, and--
Could you speak up, sorry, a Fire Department what?
Alarm, excuse me, alarm system, letter is to be forthcoming, we would have to receive the submission of that letter and some, I'm going to do it.
Submit, receive the submission of?
Of the letter.
Letter, of the request?
Yeah, of the fire alarm system, so that would be an assessment.
Ah, so, okay.
Okay. Is there any other questions the board might have?
No, so, I just wanted you to take a look at the Public Assembly drawings, the Fire Department's sprinkler submission, because there was, let's see, they submitted a letter from the sprinkler company stating that sprinklers are working, but we don't have a similar letter concerning fire alarms. There is a 2009 Fire Department self-certification approval of the fire alarm, so if you could just look at those submissions and make sure that you're okay with what that means.
We'll look at the self-certification, we'll look at all the conditions for the fire alarm, and we'll notify the Public Assembly unit.
Okay.
Notify them, and then the board will--
Okay, because the Public Assembly permit was issued in 2013 for 360 persons upstairs, but so my concern was only whether there's any impact on anything if they occupy the lower level with, say, 30 people or whatever, I don't know what the rated capacity is of that lower level.
So, we'll look at that and get back to the board on this.
Okay, great, thank you. And Mr. Becker, if you could get us the rated capacity of that lower level, so that might clear it up too, if it only fits 30 people by rated capacity, then we know something.
It probably fits a lot more, but it's not used. Again, it was previously just the contractor, and it was mainly storage and some office, and again, now it's used, they're not looking to double load the space.
Okay, because you know, one of the reasons it's so mysterious is we don't have a floor plan of that area. If you provided us with a floor plan of it, then we would know, oh, look at that, it's divided up into a lot of offices, there's no way that you could have 100 people standing in there.
I'll see if we have them.
Okay, great, all right. So, then, I think, not a lot of things to submit, right?
Depends how fast we can get the fire alarm letter, but otherwise, it's not too bad, we legible plans and--
Okay, so, we're looking at a submission, then, maybe-- So, I don't know how quickly you could do this, you think that you would, we don't know about the Fire Department, but we're going to encourage them, right? Because you could come back on the 12th for--
Of--
Of April, sorry?
Yes.
Okay, we think we could close this? I think we could close this, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, oh, right. But I mean in terms of submission. Okay. Are there any speakers on this? So, I think none of the things that would be submitted are material to the issues, so it's really just cleaning up the record. So, I think we can close this and set a decision for April 12th if we can get everything by, by March 23rd.
Including Fire Department?
Yeah, they can do that.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion to close? Motion to close. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number five, 82686BZ through 82886BZ, 2269-10 and 270-10, Grand Central Parkway, Queens.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Eric Pilatnik on behalf of Northshore Towers and Continental Communications. Thank you very much for taking the time to extensively review all the material that we've submitted to your board. We know your board had an extensive amount of concerns regarding the technical components of this application for the antenna that are on the roof of the three buildings that we're speaking, that we're here to represent. Particularly at your last hearing, there were a lot of questions about building number one, 27110, Grand Central Parkway. To respond to the concerns of your board, PierCon prepared a report which has been submitted to your board. There were some photographs that were inadvertently left out of that submission, we apologize. They were resubmitted to your board yesterday, if anybody should not have copies of them, we have additional copies here, we'd be happy to pass up.
We didn't, we didn't see them.
You didn't see them, so?
I saw them.
You saw them?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't see them.
None of them did.
And while those are coming up, I'll introduce the people that are here to speak with your board, because they're going to give you a lot more information than I can give you. Mr. Glenn Kotowski is here, he's building manager. Earl Brett is here, building representative. Also with us here today is Frances Pujolte, she prepared the report from PierCon, as well as Mr. Bill Davies of Continental Communication. We would just like to say at the outset that we stand by our original statements and our original presentation of the application, which is that the building as currently operated has always been in full compliance with the Federal Communications Guidelines, specifically section 704 subsection B of the federal telecommunications act. So, although we are more than happy to respond to all of the requests of the board for additional information, we do just want to make clear that we have been and always have been and are right now in complete compliance with the telecommunications act, specifically, as I said while everybody was passing around the paper, section 704 subsection B of the telecommunications act.
That was not, it was not in compliance with our resolution.
Right.
It was not in compliance with your resolution, correct, well, according to the board.
Building what?
But by the same token, we believe that the governing factor is the FCC. Having said that, we'd be happy to respond to the concerns of the board, we've taken every effort we can as an applicant to respond to every concern of the board that you've raised, including making substantial changes in the operation of the roof, including the installation of a system that's never before been designed, but which has been created specifically at the request of this board. We've also made accommodations in communicating with two of the broadcasters that are on the rooftop, which are also governed under FCC licenses and have their own requirements to the federal government that they must satisfy, which are a component to this application. So, we've tried to do every, everything we possibly can in order to accommodate the board. So, while the banging is going on, I'd like to, if it's okay with the board, bring up Frances from PierCon, and she could go through the report and speak a little bit more to some of the questions you had yesterday about the wattage, about the direction of the antenna, and things of that nature. We'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have upon completion.
Good morning, members of the board.
Pull your mic, pull the mic down a little bit, please state your name for the record.
Frances Pujolte. So, based on the last hearing and the concerns of the board, we worked with two of the antenna companies, one was T-Mobile, and the other one was the FM Broadcast. And basically, we made modifications to the system so that the two areas that were of concern, one was in the corner, and the other was the section wing C that exceeded the general public limits. And after those changes, a new survey measurements were taken, and it was concluded that those areas are now below the FCC limit for general public population. So, one change to the corner from T-Mobile is we redirected the azimuth of the panel antenna that was located on the corner. So, basically, the antenna radiates outward toward the horizon. When it was originally pointed, it covered across the section, the corner section of the roof. Now, it is pointed outward, so now it is looking over into the horizon, into open space, and not putting exposure on the roof itself.
Do you know how it was reoriented, what was the process involved in reorienting?
Basically, you untightened the bolt clamp on the metal pipe, and you swivel the antenna to turn outward, in the outward direction, pointing away from the rooftop.
So, if the bolt clamp gets a little bit old or whatever--
Normally, they don't, normally, they're very secure because it has to stand up to certain wind speeds, so they, structurally, they have to comply.
Do you know whether it was tightened using a tool or by hand?
No, it was tightened using a tool, the actual field operations person from T-Mobile was there on site with his tool bag, so he physically did the change. The other change was in regards to the FM broadcast radio station, where an alarm monitoring system was implemented. And basically, there is an alarm panel now within the room where the base station unit is held, there are contacts on every access door to the rooftop, so there are four accesses. There's the--
Those little white contacts?
Contacts, correct. And basically, when you open the door, it's similar to an alarm system in your home, when you open your window, you have those contacts on your window, it will trigger the alarm if someone enters or you forget to turn off your alarm, you open the window, but it's very similar. And if you push open the door, it automatically sends a signal down to the alarm monitoring system to reduce the power on the FM broadcast base station.
Where is the sig, where's the transmitter that reduces the signal? So, I see the little panel box, looks like a, basically, just a J-box with a red and a green light, and I see that it's hot-wired.
Yes, so the contacts are wired, that wire goes down into the equipment room to the alarm main panel that's connected on the wall.
Where's the equipment room? Where's the equipment room?
The alarm panel is actually inside the equipment room, a photo of the actual equipment.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
But where is this equipment room?
Right.
Is there, yeah, is there?
Yeah.
William Davies, Continental Communications?
State your name for the record.
William Davies, Continental Communications. Equipment room is one level down from room seat of contacts.
In the stair, in the stairwell?
You're talking about this right here?
Yes. Well, I don't-- Well, let's just talk about what these things are. So this little J-box here?
Yes, that is located at the roof level by the access door to the roof.
Okay, so that is basically the light that says, I don't know what. It's a light that...
It's an indication, a visual indication, that someone has opened the door and that it triggered the alarm monitoring system that's connected to the base station downstairs.
Okay, so where's the alarm monitoring equipment? It's that, in the stairwell?
No, this is located inside the equipment room where the FM transmitter is located.
Where is the equipment room located?
It's located on the penthouse floor level, level below the roof. One level below the rooftop.
Okay. So this... These little things are hotwired to that?
Correct.
Okay, and then?
And then this is connected to the transmit power on the FM base station.
How is it connected to the FM power?
Actually...
It's all hardwired from this box to the transmitter itself. Everything is hardwired.
So those yellow wires that are sticking out, that's...
Each door of the... entering the roof, yes.
They go to the doors?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so then what goes actually to the FM transmitter?
Which one of those wires in that bundle?
No, does anything... Something is going now to the FM... So those yellow wires are going to the doors?
And one yellow wire is going to the transmitter.
And the transmitter is located where?
Four feet from this box. Basically, five, six feet from the box.
You have a picture of the FM transmitter?
I did not take a picture of that.
Wait, so the FM transmitter, that's not the culprit though?
It actually is. The broadcast is the one that's putting out the maximum amount of power on the roof altogether. It is...
Oh, this is so interesting. Okay, so this is located on the penthouse floor level?
Yes.
Next to apartments?
Well, this is the alarm panel.
This... No, but you said four feet away is the FM transmitter.
Yes, that's the box.
The transmitter's something...
Oh, okay.
So you have... So you have your equipment, basically, that houses all your transmitter radios, okay? It controls your power. It has your incoming power utilities connected to it.
Okay.
But from there, you have an actual physical coaxial cable that transmits that power, that signal, to the antenna. And out of the antenna is where your radiated power is coming from.
Okay.
So there's no power coming off from the cabinet itself, but from the antenna.
And what indicates actually the step down in power?
Wasn't the panel supposed to turn green?
The lights do turn green.
But I... You have a number of photos with the door open and it's still red. That was something I was curious about. Why would they still red?
That's to prove that the system is not armed. If the system is not armed, it shows that...
It's still red?
It's still red and it's not taken to go onto the roof.
Okay.
That's what that reading is.
So these pictures were taken before it was functioning?
Right.
You just had the alarms in?
Right. It proves that the alarm needs to be...
So then how do you have it wired for the light to turn green? It only turns green when it's 800 watts?
It turns... When the system is on and you push the door open, that light turns green and there's a power meter on the base station down below that will show that it reduces the power.
So where's the power? So this isn't a picture of the power meter?
No, that's just a picture of the...
Okay. Because we'd like to see... Can you actually do a little video that shows us it operating?
Absolutely.
It'll be done.
So we can...
We do the walkthrough and...
Yeah. So, and that when we... When it goes to... And so the video stays on the power meter until it steps down? And then what happens? Does the door release at that point?
No, basically, it's all automatic. It's instantaneous. So you push the door open downstairs, power goes down.
Yes.
And when you go onto the roof, you're no longer above the limits for general public.
How long does it take for the power to go down?
Oh, it's instantaneously. I had... Yeah, basically. So as soon as you open the door and you see that green... You see the green light, the power is automatic. And I was actually there, standing in the area, the yellow areas, and I had someone else trigger the door. And as soon as I saw on the exposure meter, automatically reduced close to 40 to 50 percent.
Do you have other questions?
I have another question. Does the... Sorry. Does the door have to remain open for that power to stay in the reduced...
No, actually, someone has to reset it. So even if the door closes back, the power is still reduced. Someone actually has to go in and reprogram it to reset it.
And that has to be done manually?
It could be done remotely via computer. There is also an app that could be on your phone, so you can do it remotely, or you can physically go there and reset it.
So Bill Davies is the only person?
There's three of us there.
Oh, there's three of you? Okay. So then you are going... So the door opens?
I get an alert that it's...
You'll get an alert.
But there's an alert. Actually, it goes down to the front desk also?
No.
Oh, wait. This would be a good idea, don't you think? That there's... That there's... The security has been broken on the roof?
No.
They don't get a...
No. Sir, if you need to... You need to come out. Sorry.
Hi, Eric. Eric Palatnik. The building... This system that we're talking about right now has been designed solely to accommodate the requests of the board for the telecommunications component. There is a security system in the building, yes.
So the panic hardware is actually what opens the door?
Yeah, and the panic hardware would alert security of the building simultaneously. That there's a breach in their security.
So the panic hardware would alert security?
Correct.
And this little thing at the top?
Would alert Continental Communications and their team.
And then Bill Davies and the security at the bottom.
And anybody who has the authorization to reset it can reset it.
So what would be the criteria for you to reset it?
My criteria?
Yeah.
I either log in via desktop or my phone.
No, no, no. Under what conditions would you power back up?
When I get confirmation from the building that they have left the roof and they're no longer working again, that's when I go back and I reset it.
So it would physically mean that someone from security has to go up to the roof and check if anyone has decided to go out on the roof?
Correct.
For any reason?
Absolutely.
And you wouldn't power up until that was...
So they gave me a call and said, "Okay, it's been working very well for the last... So is the system in place with me in the building? They call me when they're done working? Or if somebody goes up there, they go check it out?"
So if somebody might go up there to work and it could be hours, that it's actually powered down?
Absolutely.
So what happens to the radio station?
They lose roughly 10 percent of their coverage.
That's all?
It shrinks. Roughly. After consulting with an RF engineer.
50 percent of the power reduction is only 10 percent of the coverage?
Yes. 22 by RF engineer, yes.
Okay.
The signal stays the same. There's no crackling, there's no distortion. It just reduces the coverage by around 10 percent-ish.
Does that mean that if it reduces the coverage, then would that affect the coverage?
People outside of that coverage, correct, will not have service.
There is going to be crackling or whatever because now you have less power?
On the 10 percent side, as it... From 10 percent in, there is no crack. So it would be... Say if it covers 40 miles, and 10 percent of that would be 4 miles. So that 10 percent would have distortion.
Right. So... So wouldn't your contract with the radio company be... Like, wouldn't they be upset with you because you're affecting...
Everybody has an understanding of what we're trying to accomplish here and they agree with what I've done. Look, I've been in contact... The radio station helped me with this problem.
Is this a common practice that has been implemented in other...
Nobody has ever seen this, ever. The radio station, Univision Radio, they are probably the biggest broadcast, FM and AM and TV, and they've never, ever had to do this, ever. I've never seen this type of system. I actually built this.
I guess they don't have permits from us.
Lot of suffering, lot of work.
No. The other stations don't have permits from us.
They couldn't.
Okay.
It's some side work.
Should patent your system.
So I... There were... We had a bunch of other questions, too. So one was that you did take samples from the apartments?
I did take samples from the penthouse floor below, yes.
And that was when everything was in its full operation?
Full normal state, yes.
Full normal state. So the last time you came here, you told us that, for instance, that incredibly hot spot on top of the bulkhead, if a worker were to go up there when it's in its full capacity, the worker can only stay there for six minutes?
Correct.
After which time they have to leave for, what'd you say, 30 minutes?
Yes, if they were working up there and the... And the transmitters were not powered off for that, for a long duration of time so that they could complete their work, then those are the guidelines, six minutes.
So my question is, if at 5.3 percent... And I know that that's like at 1,000 percent up there on top of the bulkhead.
Well, the 5.3 percent is not from on top of the...
No, I know. So I understand that on the top of the bulkhead, the measurements are in the 1,000 percent, so the 1,000 percent readings are 140...
You're exceeding over 100 percent.
140 to 1,300 percent is what the readings were.
Right.
If I got that correctly. So, but that's... So that limits your exposure to 6 percent. What I'd like to know is, what is... What happens to a person who is in constant exposure at 5.3 percent?
The 5.3 percent is 5.3 percent of the FCC limit for general public. Now, the FCC limit for general public is 100 percent. So you're at 5 percent, which is... Which means that you're like almost 19 times below the limit that the FCC has set for general public.
But when they say that exposure, do they mean you can be exposed at 100 percent constantly?
You could be exposed at up to 100 percent without having to provide proper signage or some type of barricade to control that area, to prevent a person from the general public accessing those areas.
So for example, if I were at 99 percent, you don't have to put up a sign. But if I'm at 101 percent, you have to put up a sign?
If you're exceeding... If you're exceeding the FCC limit for general population, that area has to be secured and controlled in some manner, yes.
So that means that at 100... 100.01 percent, there is an exposure that's not good for me, that's why there is a sign, right?
There is an exposure that needs to tell you that you need to be aware, yes.
Well, it's not just to be aware, just I'm not supposed to be exposed. Because being exposed beyond a certain amount of time...
The FCC doesn't say even those words. They just give guidelines on what you should follow. Now, I'm going to give you an example of the 5 percent. So typically, when we do study cases on, let's say, a monopole, and on the monopole you have the four or five wireless carriers, that means Verizon, Metro, Sprint, T-Mobile, all of them are transmitting. Typically, at the ground level, you will have exposures between 5 and 10 percent. That is normal at the general public. There aren't any... You will not see any barricades around the radius of a monopole. The same thing is the case for on a rooftop. If you have four to five carriers, which you do throughout all the states, you will have a ground level exposure at a certain distance within between 2 and 5 percent. So basically, what I'm saying is 5 percent is extremely low and it's almost relatively normal to what you have throughout...
Throughout where?
Throughout the general public area.
Well, I mean, walking down the street right here, for instance, we have good cellphone service. So walking down the street right here, we're at 5 percent? Is that what you're saying?
You could be.
Depending on what building you're walking in front of and how many units are on top of the building.
So, yeah, so to give you... Again, to give you an example, again, if there's a monopole and your house is approximately maybe between 200 and 300 feet from the site, there could be an area at that distance, at that point, that you are in 5 percent range.
Okay. But so, for instance, though, inside this building, are we likely to be at 5 percent if we have good cellphone reception? Or are we more likely to be at less because we have...
In most cases, inside, when you're inside your apartment and inside a room, it'll be less because you lose a lot of the power through the... The building structure itself attenuates the signal.
So my question that I posed to you, I think, the last time was, if you had the option to buying an apartment in a building and they told you that on this floor where you have an amazing view, you also have 5 percent MPE. Then on this floor where your view isn't so great, you have zero MPE. Would you buy the apartment with the amazing view? I asked her this question.
No, I know, but she's not an attorney and I...
No, no, she's not an attorney. She's an expert in this subject.
Right, but she's not an expert in the spy and sell of real estate and I don't think it's a fair question to ask her her opinion upon what she would purchase. For example, I go to the beach a lot and I'm very afraid...
I don't want to talk about the beach.
Very afraid of sharks. So if you ask me if I would go in the water, I may not, but somebody else may. It's a subjective question. I just don't think it's fair.
It's a subjective question which you're answering for me. I think the answer would be, no, I wouldn't buy that apartment if it had 5 percent, if I knew.
So I believe that even inside the apartments, if you have a microwave and all other type of transmitting devices, if you have a... Some people have an actual small cell to enhance their Wi-Fi coverage, that you are already in the 5 percent range. People just don't realize it.
Okay.
Yeah, all right.
My concern was just in developing a procedure, a written procedure, and a method to monitor this system to make sure that it's properly functioning on a regular basis. And since, you know, just reorienting one antenna can make such a dramatic change in terms of, what was it, the T-Mobile antenna?
Yes.
That I really don't think any changes should be made to the equipment on the roof. And if you are going to change any of the equipment on the roof, then you should have a whole analysis done by PierCon again. Because evidently, from the last time you came to the board and now, equipment was changed, equipment was upgraded, and conditions changed significantly.
I just spoke to Bill Davies, Eric Palatnik, in response to that comment that was made by Commissioner Montanez, whether or not some way to monitor the changing of equipment. Mr. Davies and Continental Communication would agree that any antenna, other than the whip antennas, because the whip antennas don't pose...
Those are just the stick in here?
Yes, that they'd be happy to condition any approval or any grant that your board should deem desirable upon no changing any of any of those antennas that we're talking about.
The dish?
The dish, or I'll let Francis specify the exact antennae, but we'd be happy to accommodate that request to alleviate the board's concerns and with the condition that the whip antennas, they get changed out quite often. Carriers change quite often. It would be quite burdensome to come back every time a whip antenna was changed.
And what about monitoring the hardware on the door in terms of, you know, powering down?
We'd be happy to give you a full, like you asked for, a programmatic needs, I think. Really, not programmatic needs, but a program, an operational program of what monitoring system will be in place, how it will be checked, what Mr. Davies and his organization will do to ensure compliance with the board's request.
It should be like...
And ongoing, and we'd be happy to. We'd be happy to.
Well, for instance, Mr. Davies invented this interesting step-down system. I'm wondering if you could go back to your electronics supply store and come up with something else where you are actually monitoring on a monthly basis, or even maybe more frequently than that, what the exposure levels are and that that information is supplied to...
Wait, just... The what is?
So my concern is that over... Since the last BSA approval, the exposure levels increased so dramatically and no one was watching. And but for this board asking that you conduct another test, nobody would have known that how hot that roof is, right? So it seems like... And we can't ask you to come back here every month and appear before us and, you know, deny the permit every single month, right? So what I would like to see is you come up with a monitoring program where you are regularly monitoring these exposure limits, like every month, and that you submit copies of that monitoring to us and also to... and also to, I don't know if you have a property owners association, something like that. Because I'm concerned, I'm concerned that management isn't taking enough care, and the real, the real risk here is to residents, so and to workers.
Bill, just very quickly. We'd be more than comfortable with having Mr. Davies do a monthly report and have Piercon come annually and summarize those reports, and once a year submit to this board.
A whole year where it's, where the monitor, where it's off the chart?
Well, again, we are, I can't emphasize enough that we're in full compliance with the licensing requirements of the federal, of the FCC.
But you were saying that when it was so hot that it was dangerous for workers to be on there.
Well, no, it wasn't.
Then you were not in compliance with the BSA.
I understand, and it's not our, I'm not here to, by any means, dispute the board's concerns. But this is a federally regulated area of law.
Correct.
And they are in compliance with the federal regulations. We're happy, having said that, we understand the board wants to make sure and that it's safe to the most best amount that it possibly can be.
But you really weren't in compliance with the federal regulations because you only put the signage on after you found out the roof was hot. There were workers going up there and working, and they were not, and it was not in compliance.
I believe it had signage, didn't it not have signage?
No, you put the signage on after.
On the new area. So, the board did pick up on that, and you're one hundred percent correct.
After years.
You're one hundred percent correct, having said that.
Years of a hot roof, dangerous to workers and others.
We're happy to submit an annual report from them. We can submit to you monthly Mr. Davies' report, monthly, so that you can have that at the board of like.
But what would that, the monitoring report is what's, not Mr. Davies saying he went up to the roof and then isn't it nice and the light went green to red or whatever, but what is the exposure level on the roof? It seems to me that you would be able to set up some kind of a monitoring thing. Like you see these DEP monitoring equipment that gets set up permanently in locations, that you set up a monitoring thing where the output of the monitor is fairly constant.
No, yeah, no such tech, well, you speak to that.
I know of being able to monitor a certain location, but you're asking for an entire rooftop, and so that.
If you had, for instance, we know that there are hot spots. If that hotspot goes higher than what we expect, then we know there's a problem, right?
Well, we, what we do know, we do know that the FM broadcast is the main contributor. So, maybe a better way is to monitor the actual power meter and to make sure that it's staying at that constant level from this report going forward. And any change, any increase in the power would therefore.
Increase the power.
Increase the exposure. So, in order to keep, so we know, one, that to ensure that the contacts are working, to make sure that the power is reduced. And the other would be to monitor the power, at the power meter source, to make sure that that hasn't increased as well.
So, there's no, no increase in the RF without the increase in power?
Correct.
Okay, and is there a way to get a readout from that power monitor?
Glenn Kautowski, who's with the building, is listening to the conversation, and he has some information I think that would address the board's concern.
Good morning, Glenn Kautowski, General Manager, North Shore Towers. I would just like to open with a couple of comments made yesterday. I watched the executive session.
Wait, but before you do that, we're still working on the monitoring.
Well, I want to address that, and this is part of it.
Question was asked, would you answer it first?
Yeah, just, let's just stay on the monitoring and then, I want to understand whether there's a technical approach to actually keeping track of the power levels, for example, as was suggested, which seems like one approach to doing this.
Well, first of all.
But you're not the technical person, can we have the technical person just answer the question, please? And then you're free to tell us lots of other things, you're not the technical person.
So, basically, those would be the two checks that could be implemented. One is to verify on a monthly basis that the alarm monitoring system is working effectively, and the other would be to monitor the power from the FM broadcast radio station on a monthly basis to make sure that that has not increased.
How is, how is that accomplished?
A power meter can be physically attached. You can have a power meter connected to the transmit power at the base station, and you could be able to see the wattage.
Is there a way of transferring that, that information, like to a computer somewhere so that?
He can physically videotape.
You see it like every day, you know, he takes a look at it and goes, yeah, it's working. And as opposed to.
A monthly?
Go up there. Yeah, is there, is there a way to do it remotely at all, or?
That is your next entrepreneurial thing to do.
But you're looking at it as being at full power every day, until somebody goes onto the roof and then it went.
No, it's not only to check about that, it's to check whether the power increased like it did over this time between the last BSA approval and now, right? That's what we're really talking about.
My monthly inspections would know that.
Does it ever go above sixteen hundred that you're aware of?
It doesn't go above what it is now, no. They're legally not allowed to go above what their license form, they're transmitting at their license wattage.
If you're personally going up and taking a look, it, it depends on the day that you actually do it. So, let's say today you went up and you said it's perfect, but tomorrow you have a huge spike, you wouldn't know about that. So, how do you, how do you daily?
Right.
Figure out whether or not you have a.
But you have, but you have the second safety. So, say there was an increase and you didn't catch it, but still, as long as you are ensuring that the alarm monitoring is working, anyone accessing the roof, that power gets reduced.
Yeah, but the whole point was you're not to increase the power because then that creates hot spots on the roof, right? So, we've been trying to, we're trying to get the power to be at some reasonable level so it's not an incredibly dangerous, so you're not creating a danger. I mean, you're only really talking about one spot and monitoring, right? So, there's got to be a technology out there, I can't believe that there isn't a technology that actually can track what your power output is, you know, every moment of every day. So, for example, if we have a base power output right now, like the standard power output that's being used, and if we had a monitor, an alarm, for example, that if it goes above a certain amount, it sets off an alarm, could you do something like that? I mean, and you don't necessarily know the answers now, right? You may, you may need to work on some sort of mechanism for doing it.
You're referring to the actual power from the transmitter?
Yeah.
The physical power of the transmitter, not the power of the exposure on the roof, correct? You talked about the power of the transmitter, not her reading, her readings, is that what you mean?
Well, the power of the transmitter, doesn't that ultimately?
Affect the readings, yes.
Affect the readings? So, what we're trying to do is keep the readings stable so that, so that we know that based on what we've discussed here today, that the roof is not going to be hotter than it currently is, right? We're trying to, that's the whole point.
Hi, Eric Palatnik. I think everybody's understanding they're trying to think on their feet.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a technical item, I think, that requires more than a couple of minutes of deliberation.
Right, okay, so that's what we're looking.
We understand what the board is trying to achieve, and we'll try to work to find a solution that satisfies the board's request.
Okay.
I mean, if there's a capacity of sixteen hundred, that's the limit, isn't there a way to have a machine just completely shut down after sixteen hundred so that it never exceeds that, and that you ensure that the metering is always at that level and never increasing? I mean, that's one of our concerns. So, there's a way to kind of completely put a automatic shutdown, once it exceeds that amount?
Well, we understand the question, we're going to try to find what the solution is.
Okay. Now, if the.
Mr. Kautowski.
Yeah, Mr. Kautowski would like to speak.
Good morning. I would just like, I watched the executive meeting yesterday. I would just like to address the comment made about management, couldn't care less about what goes on the roof. I've already received phone calls from my constituents or my people I serve at North Shore Towers. I quite frankly find it slanderous and offensive. We do a lot to protect the safety of residents, as you wish it to be your priority. We agree it should be a priority, and we agree with that. Independent of what they're doing, the Board of Directors, North Shore Towers, authorized me to hire an independent testing company. We also purchased some meters, and my chief engineer has been going up and taking readings on the roof. And we're finding the readings are lower than what's in the Piercon report, and we take it very serious. And the fact of the matter that this is on YouTube to millions of people, I would just like the public is safe for the record, the safety of our residents is a paramount concern.
Are you with the building?
Yes, I'm the attorney for North Shore Towers.
Okay.
And.
State your name for the record.
My name is Errol Brett, and on behalf of the Board of Directors and management, we are very pleased that you folks are taking such a great interest in this process, particularly about the safety and welfare of the community. But I think you have to know a little background about this property. This building was built in nineteen seventy-three, seventy-three, seventy-four, all three buildings. And it was converted to cooperative ownership in nineteen eighty-seven. When the building converted to cooperative ownership, the developers or the sponsor gave a long-term lease to CCI, which was part of the cooperative conversion, I think it was to run to twenty thirty-four. The cooperative, after it became a cooperative, the Board of Directors did increase the term of that lease, but it's irrelevant because still we have a long time till twenty thirty-four. But on two separate occasions, tried to break the lease because of the concern. Now, you must remember, when this lease was executed, the technology was quite different. It was basically, the only thing we had was those buzzers to tell you to call, you know, those little things you wore on, on your belt. We didn't have cell phones, we didn't have anything. It's like my, I wish my grandchildren saw the hallways so they would know what a telephone looked like because it's out there. But in any event, we had two litigations with regard to trying to stop this process, to get that, we didn't sign, one year, about six, seven, eight years ago, we wouldn't sign the application, which was our obligation under the lease. We wouldn't sign the application. And they brought us to court, and they sued all the board members for millions of dollars personally, and we hired Troutman Sanders to defend the case. And we ended up in Queens County Supreme Court where it wasn't able to break the lease. So, now we have a lease that we can't break. Certainly, the money isn't of interest anymore because it's insignificant, but they're up there. So, we want as much as anybody on this table to have it as safe and healthy as possible. But the last thing is to give the impression that the Board of Directors and the management is not caring about their community is just not quite fair. So, again, on behalf of the Board of Directors, we are doing everything we can at all times, including hiring companies and doing our own monitoring. And if we found anything wrong, we certainly would come here and tell you folks immediately. So, if you have any questions about past history or background, I'd be pleased to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to add anything? Because I want speakers also in the fire department.
No, I was just going to wrap up, but we'll wait here for the rest of the speakers.
I believe the fire department wanted to speak this.
Yes. John Yakovon, the fire department. Based on the state of the art of the North Shore Towers, which I fully understand, and the forward-moving of this technology, which is something that none of us could really properly stop, keeps moving forward at an exponential rate. And in listening to the dynamics of what's going on in this hearing, there's apparently an issue with power on the roof, hot spots, whatever. And we at the fire department, we have a rooftop unit, and we're dealing with this forward technology the best we can, based on letting our line units, meaning our operations, the local fire companies, know and be privy to what is on any given specific structure. So, in summation, I think what might have to be addressed, and I think it's been conscientiously addressed here, is balancing some sort of an equation with monitoring the power threshold levels on the roof with some sort of backup or redundancy program, which would, which would translate into a certain amount of safety so that in any caveat situation where the fire department has to get to the roof, at least we have, we can perform our operations knowing that there is a secure method of having rooftop access for whatever the issues are that need to be addressed in emergency operations. Because we at the fire department, as always, we're an end user, and we're an emergency response agency. So, if you dovetail those two things together, this technology oftentimes plays significant roles with the fire department. We even see this on different levels with what we call structural integrity, lightweight construction, which is based on economies of scale. This has been happening over the past two decades, and it's rampant, where we often have to have a certain system set up whereby we can keep track of certain buildings that use certain types of construction that would address early collapse potential in case we have to respond. So, in listening to this, I do believe that the system is a very effective system. It's forward technology, but I, I think on the, on the flip side of the coin, with the ounce of prevention, we might have to balance, maybe there's some equation that could be balanced with monitoring hot spots on the roof, the power levels, along with maybe some sort of backup system.
Well, sorry, like what, what do you mean by?
I don't know. Well, what I call, we call it redundancy in the, in the fire department. It's like a fail-safe system, so we have assurances that if we need to get to the roof, we're not going to put ourselves in a life safety or compromising position.
Well, I was thinking from listening to you, that the area that's yellow, it might be good on the roof to somehow indicate that or even paint the roof, like with yellow stripes or something, to say, this is a caution area. In terms of the.
But what is the fire, what does the fire business do?
As long as we have, no, as long as we have some sort of notification system of what the potentials are that we, that we might be dealing with. That's the point that I'm trying to, you know.
But for instance, just knowing that the area, for, I don't know if you had a chance to actually look at the plans and the points.
No, I didn't.
So, we can show you this, but the, but there's, there are sort of three wings to the building. It's a T-shaped building plan, and one, and one leg of the T is a hot area where really the general public shouldn't go. Workers are allowed to go there because they have a higher allowable limit of exposure, for whatever reason I don't really understand, but anyway, the general public can't stand in that area. They don't know in which place a fire department first responder falls, but.
Well, they can't preclude where we're going to be in an emergency situation.
Yeah, knowing it's a yellow stripe doesn't really help you because you still, if you have to put out a fire that's on that part of the roof, you have to go there, right?
Well.
So.
Ostensibly so, yeah, I agree.
And there's even, there's a bulkhead.
Or if there's a system of backup to shut down that hotspot, I don't know.
Yeah.
If this is something that could be critically designed. Again, we do have a rooftop unit in the fire department. This unit has been recently established, I would say, within the past ten years, based on the forward movement of technology with cellphone towers.
Right.
Communication towers. So, I'm just, I'm just raising this issue and, for contemplation. It's that when, when we do designs like this, I, you know, we have to look at the whole picture from an emergency standpoint.
It sounds like what the fire department really needs is a place where it can go and it knows to go, where it literally throws a switch and it shuts the whole thing down.
That is a, that's a very feasible.
Yeah.
You know, comment, assessment.
Right, okay.
So, I'm just raising an issue, I'm just, I'm just planting it in the seeds, and you can let us know if you want any input on us, on our part with this, or if there's anything that, that the applicant can forward to us.
Okay.
Forward to our rooftop unit.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
I just want to state again that the, the alarm system that has been put into place, again, once anyone, whether it's the fire department, police department, or anyone enters the roof, that power is reduced so that all the areas that were originally flagged yellow on the roof is now green, so they wouldn't have to.
Let's just put this into perspective, right? It's little yellow wires that are going in the fire stair down to another level. And when you've got a fire situation, the little yellow wires aren't going to withstand heat. when you've got a fire situation, the little yellow wires aren't going to withstand heat in any way. Sometimes they don't work, you know, things corrode and it doesn't work so great. So I think actually, the fire department's point, there should be a place where fire department knows it can go, throw a switch, they have a key to it.
We can create a place. I just spoke to Mr. Davies. There's an easily accessible place at the penthouse level where a kill switch can be put in place, the fire department can be alerted, and should there be a reason for the fire department to be on the roof, of course, that would trump any telecommunications that would need to occur at that moment, and they could shut down the system in its entirety to the same level as if the door was tripped. So it could provide the fire department assurances, not only if they were to open the door, but they could also put a person there to kill it at the same time, so in case the door, for whatever reason, failed.
Maybe you should confer what the fire department is to?
Yeah, we will.
The exact place that that should be. It may be better to be on a lower level, so that when they're actually entering the building and then they know the situation, they can kill it.
We'll confer directly with them.
They should probably be the ones to tell you where that kill switch ultimately?
We will, we'll speak with them. And we'll work that out.
Good. Okay, are there speakers on? Are you finished with your presentation?
There was one other issue you raised, at least, and you haven't discussed today, is the issue about the so-called fire evacuation plan that you had raised. There is such a plan, which is in fact prepared by the fire department strictly for North Shore Towers. And should I hand it up to somebody? Would I be rude?
No, come. There's only one? You want to have one?
I'll give you some more before I move.
Okay. Next to the chair.
Give that whole package.
Does the evacuation plan include exiting at the roof?
It's not evacuation plan, it's a safety plan. I think the fire department will, it's in their documents, tell you, and they underline it, don't go up, go down. You're not supposed to go towards the roof. According to the plan, it's on the next?
It's the whole plan, apparently.
It's on the next to the last page there. So we give out annually, which were required by law, a fire safety program, which are the notices that are enclosed there. And in the last document, I think in the packet that I gave you, it specifically says, use the stairway and go down. And then, of course, anytime someone buys an apartment there, they get the fire safety rules once again with regard to what has to happen. It's a page on this document, which is on the green floor letterhead, management company, it has all this information, and it says, stay calm, don't panic. It tells you all the things to do, and item, where is it, Glenn? I missed it here.
Glenn, you know which page I'm on?
Yeah, it's in the file. Where's the file? Can you give that away?
Yeah, it's in, this is what it looks like, this page. Chairperson?
Yeah, yeah.
The fourth page.
And then it has, if the fire is in your apartment, get everyone out, stay as low as you can, et cetera, et cetera. Do not use the elevator. And then it says, go down to the nearest stairway. Down, and they underline the word stairway. So I think it's the fire representative this year because there was a concern that people would go up. Obviously, anything can happen, but we do have this fire safety plan, the city requires that they monitor it, they audit it. They were at the property, I'd say, six or seven months ago, going over this wisdom. So that this thing that we don't have some kind of plan for the safety, hopefully that is dispelled by having all these documents, which are distributed annually. Any questions about the fire safety program?
Anything else from your group?
Oh, thank you for your courtesy.
Thank you. Is there any speakers on this? No speakers on this? Okay. All right, so we need to come up with, we wanted a video showing this shutdown system in operation.
I made a list, if Madam Chair, if it's accepted with you, I'll read it back to you to make sure we covered everything that you've asked for. Video of how the shutdown, or the lowering of power works, written procedure as to how it works, how the shutdown works, and a method as to how we will monitor it, that we'll discuss in our submission, agreeing to condition, any approval if the board should desire to approve the application, and no change in any of the dishes without the board's prior consent. We will provide a system of monitoring the exposure levels on the roof that hopefully would be acceptable to the board. We will create a fire department, FDNY-approved, shut-off, back-off system shutdown in addition to the door triggers, and we will submit to you the fire safety plan that Mr. Errol Brett just spoke to you about.
Okay. Anything else that anybody else wanted to see? Okay. So?
We could use about four weeks to submit. That'll give us time to, really what we have to work on is with the fire department and to create that, the monitoring technique that we're going to be utilizing.
Okay, so you could submit then on the, for hearing on the 26th of April? Does that work?
That works great.
For a submission on April 6th, is that too soon?
That is too, I have a feeling, I don't have my calendar in front of me, but it sounds like that's around Easter time, which I think is going to gunk up the works a little bit. Maybe we can go a couple of weeks later.
So the next hearing after that is May 3rd?
That's great.
Where their submission would be, April 13th?
That's definitely good. That's enough time, yes, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Item number 6, 17392BZ, 220 East 86th Street, Manhattan.
Good morning, members of the board. Chris Wright, first, I would like to say, give a personal thanks to your general counsel, David Schnackenberg, for his help in this matter. I think we resolved the impasse, and we're ready to provide the information to the FDNY examiner. He will sign off. If he doesn't, I will call your general counsel.
Please.
And we can move this towards a decision. And I want to, again, thank him very much for his involvement.
Great.
So I'm happy, give me a German, I don't know how long it will take, maybe give me two months just to be safe.
Okay.
So I have to keep coming down here, it's just an expense.
No, 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 it's no need.
And we'll get it in as quick, I'll get it in as quick as I have it. You know, you can give me a submission date, but I'm going to give it to you as soon as I get it.
Okay. So in that case, are there any speakers on this? Any comments from our side? Okay, so?
Let me just get my calendar up, please. Okay.
Want something like the end of May, May 24th?
End of May, uh, May, sure, May, you're saying?
May 24th is the last hearing of that month?
Okay, sure, May 24th, that's fine.
May 24th, and obviously submitted as soon as you have it, but for an official submission date, that would be May 4th?
May 4th, okay, that's fine.
And but if you get it between May 4th and May 24th, at least we're getting?
I'm going to get it to you as fast as I can, before anybody changes their mind, okay? Thank you very much, and I will contact your staff immediately if there's any issue.
Please, that should be the rule.
My client wants this over with, okay? Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, repeat the dates, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Yeah, May 24th, submit May 11th.
May 11th, okay.
I'm sorry, May 4th, May 4th.
May 4th, submission, 24th hearing date?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 7, 4710BZ, 895 Zariga Avenue, DeBronx.
Good morning, Jessica Rubinstein, on behalf of Eric Palatnik, PC. We heard the board's questions at yesterday's review session, and so I'd like to introduce Mr. Eric Mine, the project engineer.
Good morning, Eric Mine, Boulder Engineering. I understand the board had some comments about the performance standards still, so I wanted to take an opportunity to address those. I know we presented some information relative to our interpretation of the section in that Class III materials or products may be stored, manufactured, in manufacturing or processing. Again, we're not manufacturing or processing, this is simply a distribution facility, the gases are filled elsewhere, they're stored here, usually overnight, and then trucked off-site. But to address some of the other specific concerns, the cryogenic oxygen will be stored inside the building. The building is fully sprinkled, so we do address that performance standard as it stands. And the LPG was something we worked out with the fire department, they preferred it outside. Quite frankly, if there's a release, it's much better for it to release to the air rather than in a confined space. So hopefully that addresses your comments.
But then you can comply with the prior condition that you're going to comply with the performance standards? Because you were saying that the performance standards was not?
Well, yeah, the performance standards, again, are for products that may be stored or utilized in manufacturing, which, again, we're not utilizing these products for manufacturing. So I really don't feel like 42270 applies to our use and what we're doing with these gases.
But it does include storage.
For the purposes of manufacturing. And I'll bring your attention to section, which one is it? Well, A2 is that the building be fully sprinkled, which, that we comply with, and it's section A3 that discusses the end product become a Class I item. And again, these gases aren't being utilized for manufacture or processing, for that matter. They're really just trucked in and trucked out, and that's all we're doing. And again, the LPG being stored outside, that was a request of the fire department. They do do monthly inspections, the local office, and one of their preferences were to be able to see through the gate. They can do spot inspections on top of the monthly inspections to inspect both the storage and the certificates of fitness of the operators of the facility.
Any other concerns like that?
Well, I just wanted to ask the fire department?
Yes.
If they were satisfied with the setup for the interior storage? I know they've analyzed the exterior storage.
While the fire department?
Because I really don't see the problem of complying with the zoning resolution. You're in a non-combustible building and you have an automatic fire suppression system.
Yeah, and while the fire department approaches, again, it was their request that the LPG be stored outside, and that's why it's not sprinkled.
Well, the other thing is, part of the zoning resolution says you have to store it inside, correct?
Correct, and it was, I'll let the fire department speak to that.
Right. John Yakov on the fire department. The question is predominantly outside storage, it's usually the best because it's vented into the air. That was a major issue that we had at the fire department regarding this case.
What about the interior storage? I know you've done a very thorough analysis.
The interior storage is something that has to be addressed, well, in both cases, you need a certificate of fitness essentially, and also, that would be subject to a review, generally by the, what we call the district office organization.
So there will be a further review by the fire department?
And to review the configuration of the building, the layout that's being stored, more or less it takes some sort of fire safety inventory of what's inside the building. So if you want us to conduct some sort of inspection?
Well, you will.
Yeah.
There are actually an operation?
Outside, we want to be sure that there's some outside with the LPG gas.
So you haven't done an inspection on the inside of the building, the storage?
It's an existing building, so there probably wasn't inspection, but I can communicate with the district office organization, who does these permits, and part of approving anything or issuing a permit for operation is to do a complete inspection inside and around the premises of the building.
So you're going to check whether an inspection would actually conduct?
Yeah, I have to check to see whether there was an inspection actually done on this site.
So, and perhaps if there wasn't an inspection, then schedule?
Well, if there wasn't, if there is not an inspection, then we would have to conduct an inspection.
Okay, okay. All right, so you'll let us know about that?
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, no problem.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we, is that Commissioner Montes?
Yes, if the fire department can do an inspection, or if they've done an inspection and they're satisfied with all the safety installation, you know, the automatic sprinkler system, then that's?
Okay, yeah, if I could just comment very quickly, there's many layers to the fire department, there's the local office, which will do their own inspections, then we had our approval from the tech management unit, which kind of oversees this. We'd be happy for the fire department to provide their findings to you. We have the approval, we'll provide it again to you for your records with the conditions imposed.
Okay, we'll forward that to the fire department as well, so we can tie the loops together. Okay. I think the other thing that we talked about was some, just some corrections to the drawings that need to be made? And then also, the planting and fencing should be installed now?
Correct.
Okay?
Just to clarify, you wanted us to add the details that appear on BSA 607 to the site plan?
Correct.
And with respect to 607, there are two detailed sections, there are CCs, but no DDs?
Correct.
Okay.
And also more information about the steel bollards?
Correct, we'll add that.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you. Are there any speakers on this? Okay, I think what we're doing now is we're just tying up loose ends so we could close, pending, and schedule this for decision, right? Pending receipt of all that other stuff, right? But you're going to install the plantings and show us photographs of it, right?
I'm being told that we have the permit to install the proposed fence, so it might take a little longer than two weeks, so maybe if we have four weeks to submit, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's fine, right, okay, perfect. So you would then submit, you'd like to submit in four weeks, in other words?
Correct.
Yeah.
Submit to April 6th.
We can submit the revised plans before that, but if the board would like everything together, including the photographs of the new fence and the landscaping, it'll take about four weeks.
Okay, so how about we schedule you for a decision on May 3rd?
Okay.
With a submission ideally of April 13th? But if you trickle in some other stuff to just finish it up, that'll be okay.
Okay, great.
Okay, so, and then for, based on that, so April 13th, submit, May 3rd, decision, and for a motion to close?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hanksen?
Aye.
Commissioner Montes?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New cases, item number 8, 73241BZ, 100-17 Beach Channel Drive, Queens.
Good morning, Eugene Pillman, on behalf of Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session yesterday, and you made a comment that multi-part dispensers should be dimensioned from the slot, from the lot line, as well from each other, so they're going to be 15 feet from Beach Channel Drive and 25 feet apart. We're going to revise the plans to indicate that. There were also comments about the condition of the fence, the fence in the front of the property at the northeast corner, it will be replaced, it will be repaired, and the fence in the rear consists of a seven and a half foot tall fence with a lower five feet comprised of slats, and there are high posts that go above the fence. So we've spoken to the operator, and they would be happy to make any desired changes to the fence, so he could reduce the height to six feet and install new slats throughout.
Okay, so the post shouldn't extend higher than the fence?
No, they'll be able to cut out, but the fence right now, the chain link is seven and a half feet, so they could lower that to six feet as well in order to, and put in new slats?
Okay.
All along the rear. There were also concerns about parking on a Beach 100 sidewalk. There's no sidewalk there, it's just unimproved along the entire length of the block between Beach Channel Drive and Rockaway Freeway. And we believe that primarily residents of the apartment building at 320 Beach Channel Drive, the Bay Tower, park there, and, yeah, so the residential users park there. The site is actually, it's outside of the bounds of the tax lot, so the fence separates the tax lot, so the entire sidewalk or the area where the parking occurs is within the street line technically. So it's on city property that those vehicles are parked.
So when you get, if you ever get sidewalk violations, you know, for not maintaining the sidewalk or anything like that?
I don't believe that they have any sidewalk violations on this property. We could double-check and confirm, but I don't believe there have been any violations for conditions of the sidewalk.
Uh huh, okay.
We would be happy- We would be happy to put a no parking sign there, to put a no parking sign there and to contact the Department of Transportation, city councilmen, and inquire about the illegal parking and whether something should be done about it. But the operator does not have jurisdiction to enforce illegal parking on the street on city property.
Yeah, understood, okay. Yeah, if you could do that, a no parking sign and reach out to DOT.
Additionally, there was a comment about the FDNY report, which indicates different account numbers. We reached out to the project engineer, and this is a common issue across several sites. It appears that every time an application is filed for the same property, they give it a different account number in order to administratively track it. So it's really like a reference number, but it's listed as an account number. But this site, as shown, passed in 2015, passed in 2014, and it operates in full parcy.
So that reference number then refers to the whole site, not just like one of the dispensers or something like that?
No, 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 they track it by site, by block and lot. So those account numbers, they don't refer to different, like, to different dispensers or anything. It's, the report is, for the block and lot is indicated on the top left corner of the report.
Okay. That's, is there anything else? Anybody? Thank you. Are there any speakers on this? Okay, so we would like you to make those repairs to the site?
Right, sir.
So prior to our voting on this? So, yeah. So make the correction on the drawing, just about the distance, and then install the fences?
And the sign.
And the sign.
We would need about two months to, just to be sure.
Okay. Is there anything else that we should be, other than ducking? Okay, so I think we can close this, and then we'll just receive your photographs that everything has been installed. Okay. So for a motion to close, Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montes?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Okay, so two months. So do you think end of May is enough?
End of May, we'll be fine.
Okay, so there's a, we could go to decision on May 24th, and ideally you submit to us photographs of everything in place by May 4th. But if there's a little lag on that, that's okay on the submission.
Great, thank you very much.
Item number nine, 63654BZ9612Cvu Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jacqueline Calcanio of the law firm of Ackerman, and we represent the applicant for 9612 Cvu Avenue. I would like to address some of the issues that were raised yesterday. With regards to the certificate of occupancy, we believe that the certificate of occupancy was not issued after the board's last grant in 2002. And currently, there are no open items on the Department of Buildings website for the certificate of occupancy, but the applicant is further investigating what these open items are, and we will submit in our next submission, including what we end up finding was still open on the certificate of occupancy.
So you don't know why it wasn't, the CVO wasn't issued back then?
At this point, no. With regards to the site compliance chart, a number of the earlier points that were, the conditions that were outlined in the prior grants from 1956, we weren't able to have someone certify that these conditions were met. The last grant in 2002, we were able to have an engineer to verify that each of the conditions were met in the affirmative, except for obtaining the certificate of occupancy.
But I mean, some of them, you could just go to the site and see whether the thing was installed. Even if it was requested in 1956, if the thing was installed or the condition is there today, you could see it's there today. That's what I mean. Because the conditions of the 1950s carry forward through all the resolutions subsequent. So you're supposed to actually continuously complying with those old, those old conditions. So if whatever the rule was is not in place today, then it's not in compliance with that condition, right?
Okay.
You don't look at it, you don't try to go back in time and ask somebody who was around in 1956 whether it was installed, right? Instead, you look today and say, do I comply with that 1956 condition?
Okay.
Unless it's, unless it's an impossibility, you know, then you would say, not possible because...
Okay.
Or something to that effect, as opposed to information or belief, which is, you know, litigation jargon.
Okay. And with regards to the banners and paper signs, we will definitely have those removed, and we'll submit new photographs showing that. As well as the graffiti on the accessory office space will also be removed, and we'll submit new photographs showing that as well. And there was a question about the, whether the office storage space is still in use, and it is, and it's the same accessory office space that was approved in 2002.
Okay, it's still, it is still used?
Yes. And with regards to the plantings, the applicant is willing to submit proposed site plantings to the board in our next submission.
Okay.
And we will also repair the fence that's bent near the vacuum.
Okay. Great. Any other comments here? No? Okay, are there any speakers on this? Great, so all of those things should be done and submitted, just like you listed them? Okay, so in terms of, so ultimately, what we're going to want to see first is the landscaping plan, which shows the actual, actual planting. So the name of the plant and then the quantity on the drawings. And then, once we've seen that, then we'll expect that to be installed.
Okay.
Because it was supposed to have been installed way back when, and now it's just dead grass, so, right?
Yeah, no, I think the previously approved plans just have landscaping areas.
It's just landscaping area, but landscaping usually implies more than dead grass.
Okay.
So that's why we're trying to be more specific now with what kinds of shrubs or trees or whatever are proposed. And they, they have to be in the ground, not little potted plants. Okay. Okay. And then you'll find out about the CVO status and correct the compliance chart, because that'll help us understand if there's any other open items.
Okay.
Okay? Okay. So then, sorry, yes. So then let's schedule this for, how much time do you need? Maybe a month to get the materials in?
Sure.
Okay. So then, you could come back on the 26th of April for a continued hearing with a submission on April 6th?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Item number 10, 29279BZ112Chelton Street, Manhattan.
Nick Hawkins from the firm of Greenberg, representing the applicant. Good morning, Chair Commissioners. I know there were no questions yesterday, but I'm here.
That's so nice. No, I don't think we had any issues. I think you made your case. Is there any, are there any speakers on this? Okay, so...
There was someone.
There was? Oh, I'm sorry. Please come, sorry.
Good morning. My name is Flo Macino, and I've been a longtime member of Community Board Two, and I've also currently serve on the executive board of the Hudson Square Business Improvement District. We lobbied very strongly and succeeded in rezoning the district into an as-of-right residential. And I'm here to say that this is a wonderful thing that's happened to our community, and we just hope that you will agree with it. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming. That was heroic. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to grant. I'm sorry, to close? First I close, then I grant, okay. Motion to close. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montes?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
And then for a motion to grant. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montes?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
And Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 11, 17393BZ3223, Queens Boulevard, Queens.
Hello. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. You're here today on this application of 3323 Queens Boulevard for an application on behalf of the YMCA or the Greater Y of New York City to ask permission or the consent of the Board of Standards and Appeals to transfer unused 40,000 square feet of unutilized development rights from their tax lot to Tax Lot 50, which is at the corner of 33rd Street and Queens Boulevard. The request is being made so as to further the development of a proposed hotel at the Queens Boulevard Lot 50 site, which is wholly permitted within the underlying M14 zoning district, absent the grant of the transfer of 40,000 square feet of development rights. We attended your review session yesterday, and we'd like to address some of the questions. The first one being that, I know there was discussion in relation to the Bella Vista case of how this application affects the previous grant of the previous variance. And we make the argument to your board and respectfully submit that this, granting this application has no bearing on the previous variance that was granted by the board. The previous variance was granted by the board in 1993, and then subsequently amended back and forth, adding floor area, removing floor area, adding parking spaces, removing parking spaces. But the thrust of that application originally stayed in place, which was to convert, at that time, the existing two-story warehouse building to the Y. And originally, it was a change in use application to the Board of Standards and Appeals. In 94, when the property was an M21 zoning district, within which the Y was not permitted. In 1995, after that approval, there was a zoning change to an M14 district, which allowed the use, but the bulk noncompliance, specifically the portion of the Y that rests within the rear yard above 23 feet, was no longer permitted pursuant to section 43-dash-26. And that was what the last approval was for. So the last approval was really for a bulk approval to increase the height of the building. There was no floor area variance granted nor requested. And in fact, there remains on the property today quite a bit of unused floor area that's left. The community facility floor area that remains undeveloped upon the property as of right is 130,902 square feet on the Y site alone. It's a 40,000 square foot lot, and in the underlying zoning district, it's entitled to a 4.5 floor area ratio, which gives it an allowable floor area of 180,000 square feet. The existing Y that was approved by the board, as I said earlier, was not for any floor area whatsoever, and the Y rests right now to size of 49,134 square feet, leaving a total of unused development rights on the community facility component of what's allowable of 130,902 square feet. So we are not requesting through this application any permission by the board to modify the earlier variance in respect to the floor area, which is the reason that the application here is being made, is to transfer floor area. So I'd respectfully submit that the two are not related to one another. The rear yard request that was made by the Y was based upon a programmatic need to accommodate their gymnasium, and that gymnasium still exists in place and is currently utilized and highly relied upon by the Y, and it's still necessary to have that gymnasium in place.
I think the reason for the question was not, because it isn't actually that they're not related to each other as part of Bella Vista. You're supposed to look at whether, at the time of the original grant, there were conditions on the site that should have taken into account the floor area, that excess floor area. So one of, one of them might have been, for example, that the Y had programmatic needs that would require an extensive expansion. So that, that's, and so by cutting into, say, too much floor area by transferring it, that you might somehow or other diminish the ability of the entity to fulfill its programmatic requirements.
We understand. We could add that more and further in a written statement after the hearing. Paul Custer is here from the Y. He's Director of Governmental Affairs, and he could speak to your board and tell you that all the remaining allowable development rights, the Y has no immediate future plans to utilize any of that, 130,902 square feet. And even if they were to expand at a later point, come back to your board and ask you permission to maintain the existing noncompliance that was granted by the board, he doesn't think they would come anywhere near utilizing 130,000 square feet. In addition, the floor area that's being transferred, and we'll brief this in our papers further, is the commercial component of the floor area, which isn't even included within that remaining 130,000 square feet. The commercial component of the floor area that's unutilized is another 80,000 square feet, which the Y has absolutely no intention of utilizing their community facility use. And that commercial floor area would, obviously, for commercial use to...
So, but it's, it's 260,000 total on the site, right?
Correct.
That's allowed both for commercial and community facility.
Correct.
So by transferring 40,000, you then reduce, you have a total of eight, what is it, 90,000 on the site right now? Is that it?
We have a total of 49,000 on our site right now.
Forty-nine plus the forty, so you have like 90,000 spoken for...
Yes.
On this site.
Correct. Out of a total of 260,000, of which 80,000 is the commercial component.
Right, but it's still, 40,000 of it's whittled away. You can't use it for, it's given away. It doesn't really matter whether it's community facility or commercial, because it reduces the total of the 260, right?
Correct.
So that's really what you need to speak to.
We'll brief that.
In other words, that the 130,000 that remains is available to be used on the site?
Yes.
And then, you know, for instance, let's say the Y is really popular or more popular than it is now, and, you know, that's a huge expansion. So just to...
We'll put that in writing, and I understand the board's concern, request.
So just, just two questions for our record, Counselor. This is a nonprofit, so the first one's pretty obvious, but were, was the value of the floor area contemplated at the time of the initial grant with respect to the board's B or E finding?
No. I've reviewed the board's record. There was no discussion of financials at all.
And again, just for our record, was the, was any of the floor area that's being transferred or contemplated as being transferred here the basis of the programmatic grant in the initial application? And that, I think, believe you said you were going to review it?
Yeah, that's not impacted at all. That was solely to accommodate the gymnasium, was the height variance.
Thank you.
Right, okay. That's just to tie up the Bella Vista...
We'll be happy to address that.
It's unusual to apply to a not-for-profit, so we wanted to have that test, because it's not that there's no B finding. There is a B finding, it's just programmatic requirements.
We're happy to address it.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I think so. So are there any other comments on this?
Is there any update on the community board vote? I know...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I didn't know you didn't get word.
Sorry, sorry.
We were unanimously denied last Thursday night. It was a nice meeting, though. I got to see all my friends in Long Island City. Their concern really was the proliferation of hotels in Long Island City, the concern that the hotel could be converted, perhaps in the future, to homeless shelter, and the bringing in of additional people and the strain on the subway system and the transit system. I understood their concerns. I know that the backlash that hotels have in the city now, there's quite a few, there's a proposal and a way to curb them. But as we represented at the community board meeting, we're not here to opine upon the legality or the wisdom of putting a hotel at this location.
Which is an as-of-right use.
Which is an as-of-right use in the underlying district.
Okay. Okay, are there speakers on this?
I've just had a, oh, I'm sorry, a quick question, and I know we discussed it yesterday, I probably got the answer yesterday, but just to make sure. I think Akris shows that there's a mortgage on the property, and so I'm just wondering if that entity has, you know, has anything to say about what...
They will have no choice but to have a comment on it. They need to sign off as a party and an interest. When the Zelda zoning lot declaration agreement goes into effect, that document is going to be created. We first had to have consent of your board, getting signatures on that document from financial lending institutions is quite tedious, and they like to have all the paperwork in front of them approved prior to it being presented to them. So it cannot move forward without the financial institution's consent.
Thank you. Right, okay. All right, and then the other thing, the other question we had was for you to clarify the parking count that was approved, and actually what the parking is in place.
Yeah, the parking, I made some handouts, but I don't need to pass it off to you. We'll submit it after. The previous approval, the building is an existing noncompliant, pre-1961 structure. When it was approved by the board, it was proposed to have 65 spaces, and then, as you noted yesterday, it jumped around. Those were all voluntary spaces, as are noted in a couple of different locations in the previous approvals. It indicates that on the approved plan sheets that no parking was required, and the spaces were voluntary. Where it ultimately settled, I believe, I counted it this morning, was at about number 40 parking spaces, is what exists right now, or 43 parking spaces. I believe the C of O reads 43, and I counted on Google Earth to be about the same. So we'll submit to you the situation of occupancy. We'll also submit to you the previous approvals from the board that indicates that the parking is voluntary and shows the movement of the parking numbers.
Okay, great. Okay, so are there any speakers, speakers on this? Okay, so I think we can close. So for motion to close.
Chair Pearl Madder.
Aye.
Vice Chair Higginson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montez.
Aye.
Ms. Hartley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda.
Aye.
Anything a month to submit?
We could submit within a week. There's nothing really for us to submit, other than the Bella Vista is the most complicated part, and we could do that immediately.
So we could actually, if you could submit in a week, we could actually go to decision on April 5th?
Yes, we can submit in a week.
Okay, so then that's a submission on March 16th.
Thank you, and thank you very much for your time this morning.
Item number 12, 18909 BZ, 3067 Richmond Terrace Staten Island.
Good morning, Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of Eric Platt, NIC P.C. I have some handouts.
Okay.
So we heard the board's comments at yesterday's review session. The first thing we seek to clarify is the current status of the project. At this point, all interior work is complete. The elevator, which provides access from grade to floors 1 through 4, and the lift, which provides access from grade to the cellar, have been installed. Both the lift and the elevator were required to comply with the ADA requirements. The only thing outstanding is the installation of the fire escape, which will be completed in the next few weeks.
Okay, so as an update, so the only remaining work is the fire escape?
Correct.
Okay.
In terms of the public assembly permit enclosed in the handout I just distributed is a renewed public assembly permit and associated plans, which are valid until March 3rd to 1st. In terms of egress from the women's prayer room, we seek to clarify that right now there is only one women's prayer room on the first floor. Item 3 of the temporary permit was carried over from a prior permit, and now there references to women's prayer rooms. You'll see I indicated that on the permit, and it doesn't reflect the fact that that has since been changed. As depicted on the plans, however, the second women's prayer area was changed to the open office area to the left. So there is only one women's prayer area.
Other than that circled?
Correct. I circled it with two means of egress by way of staircases C and E, which I also circled for your convenience.
Okay, so in terms of the PA permit, though, that is.
So the permit will be, the permanent permit will be obtained after the owners obtain the C of O. That language in item 3 will be revised when they obtain the next temporary permit. That will also carry over to the permanent permit. But the plans, however, show that the plans have been revised to show only one women's prayer area on the first floor.
Okay, so that, so given that you have a PA permit for 83 people in the women's prayer area, presumably they reviewed the egress of that. What I was concerned about was.
Correct.
The reduce, because you're adding these two boxes of function here, I was concerned that the size of the egress had been reduced as a result, but.
Correct, and that kind of leads into the other question you had asked about whether everything complies with the code.
Okay.
Also, in terms of the status of the fire alarm installation, the applicant filed an application, and on March 1st, 2016, they received the enclosed objections from the fire department, which they're working to address. All the objections are really just indicate amendments that must be made to the plans. And the applicant also seeks to speak to the fire department about the sprinkler system. You'll see that the fire department also stated in their objections that the sprinkler system must be installed. They wanted to seek further clarification from the fire department about what section that was pursuant to, and they would continue conversations about that. The architect said we can update the board as soon as they speak to the fire department.
Okay, so those sprinklers that the fire department requires.
Correct.
However that gets worked out, will be installed.
Whatever happens pursuant to their conversations with the fire department, whatever the fire department requires, correct.
Okay. Do you know where they are in that negotiation? That's dated, that's just a few days ago, that conversation.
Right.
So you don't know how.
I don't, I don't know a specific timeline, the architect said, because they just received the objections. They couldn't really estimate either. We can get back to the board as soon as we're updated.
So part of the question was also the timeline for the permanent PA? I know that part of it's dependent on us, but we have the sprinkler fire alarm installation and the fire escape.
Correct.
Those are the things that need to be installed in order to sign off for the PA, aside from our decision.
Correct. Then I believe one of the other questions was with regard to the required parking. We enclosed a photograph of an aerial that we drew from Google. Parking is not required, nor was it required for the prior grant, but an easement was voluntarily executed between the mosque and the owner of the adjacent Lot 20 for permission to use the spaces. If you look at the enclosed photograph we pulled off of Google, the car, you can see cars parked in the location of where they were on the previously approved plan.
Actually, I think the prior grant noted 50 parking spaces altogether.
It did, I saw that also, but when you look at the plans and you add up the amount of spaces that are actually depicted on the plans, it doesn't add up to 50. The resolution says 50, but I looked at the plans as well. I think it adds up to 45. But either way, parking isn't required, it was just a voluntary easement that was granted.
But it was part of the approved plans.
Right, so the parking is exactly how it is depicted on the approved plan.
Actually, I was there last week, and this area is taken up with a lot of material storage.
Okay, so those materials, do you need to remove?
Huge steel plates, steel beams. It's a shipbuilding yard.
Okay, so we can speak to the owner about that and see how they can remove that as soon as possible.
So in other words, they have an easement to occupy that lot for parking, but the lot is instead occupied by storage?
Shipbuilding consortium.
We'll speak to the owner about that.
They do report the repairs, and it's like a dry dock or something.
We can speak to the owner and get back to the board on that.
So, and I believe, you know, in the prior resolution, it was probably part of the EAS in terms of, you know, where parking was going to occur.
Well, we do have Mr. Hyrum Rothkrug here, actually, who was the environmental consultant on the last approval. He will also address the question about did DEP notice to proceed, where he can answer that.
Good afternoon, Hyrum Rothkrug. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the Commissioner's question.
When we did the EAS for this prior, you know, for this case, when it was before us, I'm sure the EAS included an analysis of where parking, you know, parking demand and where parking was going to be provided, and it's part of the grant and part of the approved plans.
Okay, you know, I wasn't aware of that item coming up. I don't think it was brought up at executive session yesterday, so it's something I'd have to go back and go back and look at. But yes, I'm sure we did address parking. I know I've been out to the site several times in the past, and parking has never, never been a.
I was there last week. Parking would definitely be an issue.
Okay.
Because you saw what?
There was a lot of workers at the site. They're taking up all the parking spaces, and then there's this carrier which carries materials. There's one area which is, I would say, it's completely taken up with plates which are approximately 10 by 20 feet, that's a pile of them. Then there's another area here which has a whole bunch of H beams, and there's another area which is all channels, and then there's this machine that picks up this material and carries it around the yard. It's a big working shipbuilding yard.
Okay, well, I'll have to go back and look at our prior EAS and also check with Mr. Adam, the owner of the site and the shipyard, to see if it's a temporary, temporary situation, or if this is something that we're going to have to address.
Okay, so, and it's also a condition, if it was a condition to grant, that there be parking provided.
I'd have to double-check that.
Yeah.
It was always assumed that there were going, there was going to be parking.
Right, but if that needs to be, needs checked, whether or not the prior approval required the parking, or whether this was voluntary.
Okay.
Okay.
Then there was a question with regard to DEP, a notice to proceed, and there was, there was no, no condition to receive a notice to proceed from DEP for this particular project. DEP signed off, and the only thing they requested was a construction health and safety plan to review and approve, which was submitted to the, to the board.
I saw it as a condition to approval on the, on the BSA resolution.
You know what, what I think may have happened is that the BSA resolution put in some stock language with regard to.
Well, it's a simple question, is, was there soil disturbance involved in this project?
There was.
The elevator, yeah.
There was soil disturbance, an 8 by 10 area down to 8 feet deep for the excavation for the, for the elevator.
So you didn't get the approval or sign off for that?
We, DEP requested a construction health and safety plan to review and approve prior to any excavation, and the health and safety plan was submitted to the Board of Standards and Appeals for their request.
Right, and then that was it?
That was it.
I guess we need to, can you go back and check what, how? It ended up in, in our resolution.
I understand. Well, I think the resolution was, was wrong, because I have the.
Because you didn't find.
I have the letter from DEP, they're signed, their September sign-off right here, and the only thing they requested prior to any excavation or activities on the site was a construction health and safety plan, which we submitted to the board.
Okay, we'll, we'll check it, too. Okay.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll address the parking immediately.
Okay. Okay, did you have more things you were going to go through?
I believe that was it. The board also requested that we submit a clear set of PDF plans. We'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
I had also requested that you verify your fire guards and give us.
Oh, yes, that will, a certificate will be submitted.
So there are ID cards, basically, right? Okay, and then the other thing was, let's see, the, the, the DOB May 2014 approved plans that show the modifications.
We enclosed the May 2015 plans, correct.
Oh, that's what this is, okay. I noted that the job was professionally self-certified, and so I always pause there because you just have to say that it complies, you don't necessarily know for sure it complies. So I would like the architect to go back over the drawings and make sure that the bill, that the project complies with ADA egress appendix G requirements, because now we're in a floodplain, and that he provide a, he or she provide a letter certifying to the board that it complies.
We spoke to him over the phone last night. He said he'd be happy to do that. He did want to point out that the Alt. 1 application was not self-certified. That was reviewed by a project manager at the Department of Buildings, and the Alt. 2 work was for the elevators, some alterations to the partitions, plumbing work. That was self-certified, as you said, but he'd be happy to provide a letter attesting to the fact that it complied.
Great, okay, and then the other question was whether the approved temporary public assembly drawings and the approved Alt. 1 drawings comply.
They do, they match up.
Okay, good. And then you, so that's what this submission was, was.
That includes the TPA drawings, and everything will be submitted electronically.
Okay. Let's see, the building is sprinklered or will be according to fire department's instructions?
Correct.
Right. Uh, what else? What else? I think that's it. Okay, are there any other comments from else? Are there any speakers on this? Okay, so if we could, what? I guess we need further submission. I actually would like to see this work done, because we, what was this, this was approved several years ago and still doesn't have a C of O. I'd like to see everything sort of tidied up.
So photographs?
Yeah, photographs, sprinklers installed if required, all of that stuff, so that the only thing left to do is get our approval, and then you pull your C of O.
Okay.
Okay, so we can give you a long time to do that? Three months? Does that sound like too much?
Hmm, maybe a little less. Maybe if we can ask for about two months.
So the end of May for the next hearing, I guess.
Okay.
Because we need to understand about the parking.
Okay.
Okay, so May 24th for the next hearing with a submit date of May 4th.
Okay.
Okay, so, and in the meantime, you're going to find out about the parking, right?
Right.
Which is sort of a big hurdle.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 13, 87-12 BZ, 1720, 1728, Sheepshead Bay Road, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Jeremiah Kendrava for the applicant. I attended yesterday's review session, and if it pleases the board, I'd like to go through the comments that were raised yesterday. I do have the committee board recommendation, which was 35 in favor, 1 against, 2 abstaining for approval. I'd be happy to submit that to the board. The board asked and noted that there were a number of outstanding boiler violations at this location, and it is true, and my plan is hire Milros Consultants, who is actively pursuing clearing those violations at our cost, and it's an issue that if the board grants, which we hope the board will grant, we will need to update the certificate of occupancy to note whatever conditions that the board, in the normal course, adds on to. You know, going to change ownership hours of operation, and we can't get that C of O without clearing these violations, so we're actively pursuing, pursuing that. We did not alter any of the ADA or fire safety measures, but let me just please state that, for the record, that we do have a central station, we do have pull boxes, smoke alarms, it's fully sprinkled, we have audible and visual alarms. I do have the photographs that I made in the prior submission that show the pull boxes along the corridors and the exit, lighted exit ways.
Do you have any proof of the installation of the smoke alarms and the sprinkling and all that stuff?
I provided photo.
Those just show the red pull boxes.
I'm happy to provide, whatever issue you'd like me to provide, I'm happy to do so.
It's just to establish that it's installed, it's functioning.
Yes.
So inspection reports, whatever.
Yes, I will, I'm happy to do that. Well, the hours of operation, the hours of operation didn't change, but is interestingly enough, I did go back to the prior resolution, and, and the published, what's on the website for 24-Hour Fitness varies not significantly, but slightly. So from Monday through Thursday, the prior grant was 6 to 11. 24-Hour Fitness operates 6 to 11, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. The prior grant allowed operation on Friday from 7 to 10. On the 24-Hour Fitness website, it says 6 to 10. It's an hour earlier. I need to confirm this, but this is what I found on the website. And the prior grant had Saturday hours at 7 to 10 and 9 to 5 on Sunday, and 24-Hour Fitness's website says 8 to 9. So I'd like to, just to confirm it with 24-Hours, if they're operating outside of the approved hours of operation, I'd like to seek an amendment to those operation, operating hours. Thank you. What type of activities occur in the large open air? I'm sorry, were there any functional changes? No, there were no functional changes. What type of activities occur in a large open area? It's all cardio, weights. I, I'll submit photographs to the board, but, and I'm happy to pass this around if you'd like to see it at this time, but it's, it's just a picture from the upper level into that large open area, and it shows you the cardio and weight machines. You wanted me to. You wanted me to clarify the bubble changes on the plans. The only bubble changes that were made were to show that there was in, at the, near the entranceway, there was a slight reconfiguration towards the entrance and the other bubbles were clarifying the dimensions for egress paths that the board had asked for and that was the reason for the bubbles. Interestingly enough, the board had made a comment regarding this sign, the sign appears on Z07 of the prior approved plans, it's on the side of the building at a height of 47.5 feet. We took the position when we were valid, this was illegal non-conforming sign. We asked 24 Hour Fitness if they'd like to maintain that sign or whether or not they were going to abandon that sign. They have abandoned that sign. The only sign that 24 Hour Fitness has is at the front and that's it. And I believe we have a compliance sign chart and if we don't, we're happy to provide one to you.
So the sign that you were proposing to go for grandfathering was abandoned?
The sign that, that the board in the prior grant that noted that that was, we believe, illegal non-conforming use, 24 Hour Fitness has abandoned it, they are not pursuing it, it no longer exists, it doesn't exist any longer. And there's no...
You never really found out if it was grandfathered.
We weren't, I don't believe we were required to find out. I saw the reso. I saw the reso, but we can talk about it.
They don't like to talk about it.
Yeah, it's not there. It's not there.
It's not there, so...
Right. Okay. And I believe, I believe that was it for this one.
Stairwell obstructions.
You have boxes in your stairwell. At least you show us that on the photograph.
If there were boxes, but we will make sure those stairwells are clear. There's no construction occurring in stairwells.
Okay, so then are, do we need the total building signage analysis or we're good now because they took away that one?
Well, we have it, I guess. It's just the one sign.
Just the one sign.
It's the sign in the front.
That's it.
So, yeah, it's not a major sign.
Okay. All right. So, let's see, so you will confirm hours of operation and other than that, you'll give us proof of the center, the smoke alarms and sprinklers being operational?
Yes.
And you'll submit the committee board recommendation?
Yes, absolutely. I can give it to you, yes.
Yeah.
I have plenty of copies now if you'd like.
Okay. Any other questions here?
And a photo of the cleared stairwell.
Yes.
Okay. This photo. Are there any speakers on this? Okay, so we can close this?
Great.
So for a motion to close?
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Okay. Think you could submit this stuff really fast?
Yes.
Okay. So then we could have a decision on, I'm going to say April 12th?
Great.
No, is that, yeah?
No.
Okay. It could even be April 5th. April 12th? Okay. April 12th? Right, one. So that's a submission on March 23rd?
Fine, thank you.
Fifty-two weeks. Okay. Great, thank you.
Item number 1431312BZ 1009 Flackbush Avenue, Brooklyn.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Jeremiah Kendriva for the applicant. I attended yesterday's review session and if it pleases the board, I'd like to go through the comments and address each one. Yes, there are a number of outstanding elevator violations and here, although Bali says hired Milrose Consultants, we also have a subcontractor who is specifically charged with clearing the elevator violations and those violations we need to work through with the, with the owner of the building to clear them, but we are on, are pursuing them post haste. With respect to the ADA fire safety measures, again, we didn't make any changes to them, but we're happy to provide the board with the same type of information you've requested in the prior application that we just talked about. With respect to the hours of operation, I went through the hours of operation and it appears as if this one is extraordinarily close, except for one hour in the morning on the weekend, but I will, according to the published website, but again, I'll confirm it to the board.
Okay.
Okay, and then lastly, identify all signs, identify all signs and provide revised signage analysis, I'm sorry, there were no functional changes, I missed that, and the signs, we'll provide all the signs. We think we have already done so, but I'm happy to do so again. There are no new signs, just the front, the front sign.
Okay, well, if you already submitted it, I don't know what you have to do again.
Right, I believe we've done that, but there was a question, so I wanted to...
Is there a question?
No, my question was only if there are other signs in the building, which I didn't see, but if you can, and if there is no plan to put any of the other signs, then that's fine.
No, there are no, there's nothing, this is a large building, by the way, which is part of, this facility is within a large building, has many other commercial establishments.
Okay. Okay. So, other than submitting proofs of the operation of the fire alarms and sprinklers and the hours of operation, I think that's, those are the only open issues. Are there any speakers on this? Okay, so we can close?
Chair Promoter?
I'm sorry. Have to make a motion. A motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
And we can put that on the same schedule for a decision on April 12th, submit on March 23rd.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Everybody good?
Do you want to do the... Keep going? Two decisions?
You might want to break.
No. Two decisions? Do you want to break?
Yeah, there's a lot of really decisions waiting on this.
Okay, okay. All right. Our appeals calendar, decision items, item number 156515BZ and 6615A 361 Central Park, West Manhattan.
Can I recuse from this?
First, I'd like to say that I will make a statement explaining the board's position on this matter, then the board will permit the applicant to comment and the attorney for representing the opposition to comment as well, then we will be making a schedule. The applicant in this case has come before the board to request a variance under Section 7221 of the zoning resolution for certain waivers concerning required rear yards, minimum dimensions of inner courts, minimum distance between legally required windows and walls or lot lines, minimum distance between legally required windows and any wall in an inner court. Additionally, the applicant, under a separate appeal, requested waivers under Section 277 of the multiple dwelling law related to non-compliances with minimum light and air regulations. Both cases were heard together. This matter was last heard and closed on January 12th, 2016, after four lengthy hearings. The matter was adjourned twice after January 12th, 2016, once on the board's own motion and once at the applicant's request. By letter dated February 29th, 2016, the applicant requested permission to withdraw without prejudice both the variance application and the MDL appeal. The applicant represented through counsel that the grounds for withdrawal without prejudice were its efforts to, and I quote, "reassess the extent of the relief sought by the variance application and to examine the potential for other uses for the property." The board's rules state that if the request to withdraw is made before the hearing is closed, the board may permit the withdrawal without prejudice upon request. However, the board's rules further state that if the request to withdraw is made after the hearing is closed, the board may permit withdrawal without prejudice for good cause only, and that if the board determined that proper enforcement or public policy would thereby be served, the board may refuse the withdrawal. The board believes that the applicant has not shown good cause for withdrawal without prejudice and denies that request to withdraw. By letter dated March 3rd, 2016, counsel for opposition to the instant case alerted the board to certain comments made in the press by an attorney purportedly associated with the project. Such comments claim that the application would be resubmitted with new information but without changes to the design or residential use of the building. The board notes that these comments, which opposition claims belie the statements made on the record by the applicant, are irrelevant to this matter because they were made by a party who has not appeared before this board in this matter. Additionally, such comments are of no substance as the landmarked building cannot by virtue of its designation be redesigned and the proposed residential use is as of right. Opposition further argues that the withdrawal request appears to be an attempt to circumvent the board's rules. The board believes this assertion may not be too far afield. This is a complicated and difficult application made even more complicated and difficult by the error-filled application presented to the board. If indeed the request for withdrawal was an attempt by the applicant to wipe the record clean and resubmit the same application at a later date, the board will not condone such an action. If however, the applicant has indeed found additional information not previously considered by this board, information I note that under the board's rules would be grounds for a rehearing, the board would be disposed to consider that new information before recording on the instant matter. I stress that any new information must be substantive, credible, and truly represent new information. In light of the foregoing, I move to reopen this case for the sole purpose of scheduling a final submission from the applicant as well as the opposition and setting a hearing date at which barring the unforeseen, this record will be duly closed and a decision date will be set. I move to reopen this case.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
I will hear testimony only from the applicant and from the opposition.
Good afternoon, Board. Lisa Orantia from Acreman on behalf of the applicant, and I thank the board for reopening the hearing and I understand the board's concerns. We are prepared to make a submission that, that will have a material impact on the findings in this application and we believe that we would be able to do so within three weeks.
Thank you. Attorney for the opposition, you have a statement you'd like to make?
Good afternoon, Michael Hiller from Hiller PC on behalf of Central Park West Neighbors I'd like to make a few remarks before I give my comments on the schedule unless you want that first.
No, your remarks first and then we'll set the schedule.
Thank you. I did have prepared remarks for this afternoon. Your comments, which were, are very much appreciated, Vice Chair Hinkson, changed what I, what I had to say, and instead I just need to, I will focus on just one point, which is the one aspect of your comments that I think, with all due respect to the chair, may not have been fully fleshed out. What is not clear to me, and I'm sure won't be clear to my clients, is why the outcome, based upon the facts that you recited, why the outcome, or what, why the resolution to that situation is to reopen the record. I don't recall seeing any application by the applicant to reopen the record. All I saw was the article, which you referenced, and in that article, he certainly, the person, Mr. Corby, indicated that developer wanted to submit new information after the record had been closed by withdrawing and then, and then resubmitting a brand new application soon. If that was, if that is the developer's intention, that's, that's wrong and it violates the BSA's procedures and insults the integrity of the process. So one would think that the outcome, the appropriate result would be not to condone, or I don't use the word condone, that's the wrong word, to not give the developer an effect what the developer wanted more directly that he was attempting to do more indirectly. So I guess my point is, and obviously you voted and I hope that you may want to reconsider that at some point, but it just seems to me that if the developer is in fact attempting to reopen the record by withdrawing the application and then right afterwards wiping the slate clean, cleaning up the application and submitting new documents and new information, that the better choice would be just to reject that effort rather than allowing him to submit new information now. You mentioned the motion for rehearing. My recollection of the rules, and I haven't looked at that particular provision before I began my remarks this morning, but my recollection is that the developer's obligation is to submit evidence that the developer can prove wasn't previously available to the developer. I don't know that the board is going to insist upon meeting that standard with respect to this next submission, but I would respectfully ask that the developer meet that standard since that is the standard that the chair referenced. There's not much more I can say about it, except that I truly hope that we will have the last word on this since the developer has been submitting statements not only after us, but in some respects twice after us.
Ms. Orantia? So I'd like to set the schedule. I am going to put you on for June 2nd, which means that I'd like to have your submission by May 5th.
Excuse me, could, could we have an earlier date? Is an earlier date possible?
I'm going to put you on for June 2nd. I would like the submission by May 5th. I would like opposition submission by May 19th.
(inaudible) There's no excuse for further submissions. If we move, I will give them more times, there's just no excuses. Just everyone by two weeks, opposition, three and a half weeks or something. So then...
Just a second.
Turn to Michael. Thank you.
(inaudible) It would only be March 26th? Over.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Mr. Orantia, I'm moving you up to April 26th.
The mic is on, then? I'm sorry. I'm moving you up to April 26th. May 19th still stands for opposition and we will have hearing June 2nd.
I also want to add that the May 19th date is going to be the cutoff date for testimony. Any, any sort of input or testimony to the board, that's the cutoff date. Just, we'll put this out there on the record, submitting testimony at 9:00 AM before a hearing does not get to the board in time for them to review it in time. So we're just gonna, that's the cutoff date.
But the speakers may attend the hearing.
Oh, yes. Speakers will, can, are welcome to attend on the, on the June 2nd and we will have that an open, you know, hearing on the, the June.
May I just ask, can we, can we get a proper from the, from the applicant as to what the new evidence that the applicant wishes to submit? Just do we know where to...
When we see it, you'll see it. So...
Yeah, we don't have it. I mean, there was a statement made, I was just wondering.
What can I say? When we see it, you'll see it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to meet you, Becky.
Okay.
That's it.
It's awful.
I'll say it.
We have a hearing still commencing, please, ladies and gentlemen.
Good to meet you, Michael.
We have a hearing still commencing. Please, ladies and gentlemen, leave quietly. Thank you. Item number 1622315A, 638 Sharretts Road, Staten Island.
We have no chair. She's missing in action.
(inaudible)
You guys are so crooked. Your whole board should be following. It is a very sad thing to see. People who lay out the case and then contradict themselves. It is a sad thing to see.
(inaudible). Yeah, we said.
Sad, sad, sad.
(inaudible).
Let's take a, let's take a five.
(inaudible).
Okay. Never mind. I can wait.
There was this huge line and then the lines.
I mean, a line up to speak?
No.
They didn't speak.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, once again, item number 1622315A, 638 Sharretts Road, Staten Island. Okay, is there anybody here for this?
No.
Nope?
Nope.
Okay. So, we got our supplier department sign off on the drawings, so I think we're good. So then, for a motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oakley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Achanda?
Aye.
Okay. New cases, item number 1724415A, 677 Fifth Avenue, Manhattan.
Buildings Department, Helen?
Anybody here?
Anyone here for this?
He's coming.
No, Buildings Department is here.
Yeah, I know, I saw Buildings Department.
Good afternoon, Chair Perlmutter, Commissioners. My name is Jay Seale. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Greenberg and Trower, and we represent the appellants here. Our submission to DOB in support of the determination and our submission to the board in support of the reversal of the denial of termination explained that the cultural wall would not have a content relevant to the products and services that are being offered in the store. The determination says that the cultural wall is nevertheless a sign and under the jurisdiction of the zoning resolution because it clearly directs viewers' attention to subject premises regardless of its specific content. DOB's submission in opposition to our application here says essentially the same thing. It says the cultural wall, in the conclusion section of DOB's letter, it says the cultural wall is a sign regardless of the particular content. We believe this position is contrary to the board's holding in the Bravo case, which says that an accessory sign meets the subdivision D definition of a sign only if there's a reasonable nexus between the display and the goods or services being offered on the zoning lot. Because there's no nexus between the content of the display and because we believe that there was no nexus between the content of the display and the goods or services offered in the Microsoft Store, we were comfortable that we'd shown the cultural wall doesn't meet the subdivision D test, is therefore not a sign. Consequently, our submissions did not dwell on the portion of the sign test that says a display within a building is a sign that's regulated by the zoning resolution only if it's within a window, in a window and illuminated. In fact, the only mention in all of our, or in our several submissions of the inner-window requirement was in a response to the board's comment request. And the board's comments asked that we explain why, in our view, the cultural wall did not meet each provision of the sign regulations. We said, quote, "The cultural wall is visible from outside the building and is illuminated, but it is located eight feet five inches from the building's facade." That was the only comments that we made in our papers because we thought that the case was straightforward. After listening to the board yesterday, we thought it'd be prudent to also address this point, just to make sure we address all the findings and all the requirements for sign. The term "in a window" to us has a clear meaning. Display has to be in a window. It's not an ambiguous term. We don't know if when the draft is wrote to zoning resolution, that's what they intended. Did they literally mean that a sign had to be in the glass of a window? Did they mean it would be okay if, this would still be a zoning sign if it were plastered on the inside of the glass? Would it be a sign if it was set back a foot? Maybe they meant whether it would still be a sign if we're in a window box that was separated from the rest of the store. And maybe they meant it would be a zoning resolution sign if it was eight and a half feet back. If it's primary intent, as is the cultural, to be seen by people outside the store. We don't know what their intent was. And it's our position that where the language of the zoning resolution is clear, that the board should give, the board should follow that clear language. And here, "in a window" should be interpreted as meaning "in."
As, sorry, as? Interpreted as meaning?
Meaning the sign must be in the window. Must be literally in the window.
How do you do that?
That's a trick. And I don't know.
I mean, when the text was written, did the technology exist to allow for signs to be embedded in the window?
We could look at it. I don't, I can't imagine it's that difficult to fly jet planes. There has to be a way to do that in case a sign in glass. But I don't think it's the job of anybody to the board or DOB to look at it. I think the chair may know where I'm going about when the language is clear. Okay. We had a similar case before the board in 2006. The other question was whether the word "one" meant "one." Section 2347 provides that every zoning lot, used to provide, that every zoning lot must have one rear yard. I represented an appellant who argued that that's not what it meant. It meant that every zoning lot must have a rear yard along every lot line. And I produced a lot of evidence about intent. I had people who were DOB in 1961 testify. I had people with city planning shortly after 61, including the general counsel Norman Marcus testify. I produced a lot of intent. And I lost. DOB said "one" means "one." And this board, including Commissioner Ali Brown, on the board went along with it and smiling because Chair Perlmutter beat me up on that case and she corrected, she won the case, proving that "one" means "one." And I think if "one" means "one," "in" should mean "in." And the window should mean "in the window." And you should not be looking for intent when the statute is clear. If I need to do research to find out if a country that was sending people to the moon can find a way to put a sign in glass, we'll do it. But I don't think when the language is clear, you go any further than that.
Just to pick up on that though, because we remember that's like scar tissue, right? We had a lot of cases where the Department of Buildings had treated the rear yard as "one" means, the rear lot line as "one" means "one." You need to do the same if you want to say "in a window" means "in a window," whatever that means, right?
We have different recollections because we're looking from different sides. I recall I had a borough commissioners meeting that occurred two weeks before you got a favorable determination, which all five borough commissioners said you needed a rear yard on both sides of a flag lot. And it didn't matter because you won the case that "one" means "one."
No, but we actually had drawings that showed many cases where it hadn't meant, where it had meant "one." So I think that's kind of what we would need if you really want us to go down this path about "in a window," then you would need to bring, and DOB would need to bring examples of how the Department of Buildings has considered where it is in the window. I mean, there's, I know for instance, it's not really relevant here. The Landmarks Commission has one sort of view of that and every, all the agencies are looking at that same question of when do they stop getting to regulate what's on the glass?
Right, but I don't think DOB's view as to what language that is clear should matter. We're not talking about if the statute has words that are clear, that they should be enforced exactly as written. And the fact that DOB thinks they know how they've been interpreting it, I don't think it should matter. As you remember from our case, and I won't go back into it, is that we had a DOB memo that was written in the early 70s by one of the luminaries, and I don't remember whether it was Burger or somebody else, which said that you need a rear yard on both sides of a, of a flag lot. Both rear lot lines were flag lot and DOB had been following that. Anyway, my final point was that after our case, city planning amended the zoning resolution because it felt that the intent had been to have a rear yard on every lot line. So they amended the zoning resolution and now in 2347, it provides that you need a rear yard on every lot line. They have some technical rules for flag lots, such as the one that we were dealing with. And I think that's what should happen here. The language is clear, says "in a window," you should include the Microsoft cultural is not a sign and let city planning make an amendment to clarify whether it meant six inches behind, feet behind, in a window box, or anywhere within a store where the primary intent is that it be seen by people outside. Let them handle it, just like the board did in the, what I call the Budbrunberg case in which you have the name of your land. Okay. Now passing on, I just have to get that?
Thanks, Jay.
Okay. So, the chair asked about the uses on the third and the fourth floor of the building. The third floor is a Dell showroom. There's no sales going on. People can look at Dell computers. And the fourth?
What do you mean, it's a showroom but no sales?
No sales. Showroom.
How's that work? You just go up and you take a look, but you don't get, buy?
That's what I'm told. Maybe, there's other places you could buy Dell computers once you get excited about the one that you see there, that's my understanding. And the fourth floor is back of office space for Microsoft. So, the Bravo case. As the board well knows, the board found that a 4,650 square foot Word Bravo on the side of a building was a sign on the basis of its font and its color scheme was similar to that of the Parkfast brand. And that the Word Bravo was highly visible in a neighborhood. It was certainly possible that people could see that display from distances and would understand that there was an Edison slash Parkfast garage in the vicinity and go over to that garage before they would know otherwise that there was a parking garage there. We, here, there is nothing like that, that when you get, that the display, as we've said a few times, the cultural wall has nothing to do with Microsoft products. By the time you see it, you know that there's a Microsoft there.
Can I ask a question regarding the prior statement regarding the use on the third and the fourth floor? Is that wall visible from the third or the fourth floor? Is that wall visible from the third or the fourth floor? If I'm, if I'm on the third floor, will that be visible? No, okay.
It's a blank wall on the other side.
I didn't go to the third floor, so I didn't.
The third floor was behind the cultural wall.
Okay, so it's just a sheer wall?
Whatever material, the screens that portray it, but they wouldn't be seen.
So when you're sitting in the Dell showroom, you can't look out the window to Fifth Avenue?
Right.
Right, it's not like it's a transparent?
I don't think so. If you could, it would be a glimpse. It's not going to be, you're not going to be seen. We can't argue that people within the building are going to be focusing on that display. They're not. So you can see that there's three Microsoft logos. There's the Word Microsoft. There's the cultural above it. Nobody is going to see the cultural wall from a distance and say, "I must be approaching the Microsoft Store." By the time they see that cultural wall set back eight feet five inches, they know this is a Microsoft Store. If anything, the cultural wall to some extent is going to take people's eyes away from the logos and away from the Word. And when there's something interesting up there, and it's not all that interesting, I think Commissioner Oakley-Brown was correct. We've been respectful until the board decides whether we can exist. We haven't been showing Rembrandt, we haven't been showing the Statue of Liberty, it's been more of a placeholder, as you said yesterday. But then people might be looking at the display and not so much at the Microsoft logo. And nobody's going to look at this from two blocks away, see a picture of the Thanksgiving Day parade or whatever else we're showing, probably not the Thanksgiving Day parade, seeing the Statue of Liberty and saying, "Oh, that must be the Microsoft Store." So I think in the Bravo test, if there's no nexus to what's going to be shown on that cultural wall and what's going on in the store, I don't think this is any resolution sign, I don't think it meets the D test.
Just a question about that. So the picture that I got, or actually I think it was the Department of Buildings provided it, which was the little video of the opening, right, where you do have those boxes that are all 3D and they're spreading across that wall, right? And then in that case, it was the staff standing in front, right? In that case, they, which is content-specific, which makes this more difficult because you would try not to be so content-specific on a moving wall, right? But it was the, the boxes are the exact same scale as the boxes of the logo read against each other. It's pretty hard not to make that connection.
Right, I mean, I heard you say it yesterday and it's unfortunate and it won't be repeated. No, we've learned, we have no intention of showing Microsoft logos, any boxes that have any appearance of Microsoft logos, it's not our intent and we can sanitize that, make sure that doesn't occur, that nobody has that in mind. I mean, we don't have to do that. I mean, for example, I don't know if you're doing this. We can do that.
Yeah, but why? You already have three signs.
Exactly. Exactly. And I'm going to get there because you asked, Chair Perlmutter, you asked, "Why are we doing it?" And the answer, "Why are we doing it?" I haven't gotten there yet because I want to talk about a couple of things, but I was going to say the reason we're doing it is to do something interesting. And we could do this because those wouldn't be illuminated, but it's boring, so we don't want to do it. So we don't intend to do it indirectly by showing a interesting design up there that's like kind of artistic squares that might resemble in some tertiary way the Microsoft logo. We could do the Microsoft logo itself, but we're not doing it. No, okay. The question, the question about resolution came up. DOB said this is a high-resolution screen that showcases Microsoft's technological prowess. Well, we don't make the screen. The screen is made by a company called Silicon Core, which has nothing to do with Microsoft. Microsoft doesn't promote itself as having a screen that's different from any of its competitors. It does, but not in resolution. Microsoft promotes a touchscreen. And it's one of the few companies that have a touchscreen and Microsoft thinks it's Nobody is going to see the cultural from a distance and say, "I must be approaching the Microsoft store." By the time they see that cultural set back eight feet, five inches, they know this is a Microsoft store. If anything, the, the cultural wall to some extent is going to take people's eyes away from the logos and away from the word. And when there's something interesting up there, and it's not all that interesting, I think Commissioner Alvin Brown was correct. We've been respectful until the board decides whether we can exist. We haven't been showing Rembrandt, we haven't been showing the Statue of Liberty, it's been more of a placeholder, as you said yesterday. But then people might be looking at the display. And not so much at the Microsoft logo. And nobody's going to look at this from two blocks away, see a picture of the Thanksgiving Day parade or whatever else we're showing. Probably not the Thanksgiving Day parade, seeing the Statue of Liberty and saying, "Oh, that must be the Microsoft store." So I think in the Bravo test, if there's no nexus to what's going to be shown on that culture wall and what's going on in the store, I don't think it's a zoning resolution sign. I don't think it meets the B test.
Just a question about that. So the picture that I got, or actually I think it was the Department of Buildings provided it, which was a little video of the opening, right? Where you do have those boxes that are all 3D and they're spreading across that wall, right? And in that case, it was the staff standing in front, right? In that case, they, which is content specific, which makes this more difficult because you would try not to be so content specific on a moving wall, right? But it was the, the boxes are the exact same scale as the boxes of the logo read against each other. It's pretty hard not to make that connection.
Right, I, I mean, I heard you say it yesterday and it's unfortunate and it won't be repeated. No, we've learned. We have no intention of showing Microsoft logos, any boxes that, if any, appears to Microsoft logos, it's not our intent and we can sanitize that, make sure that doesn't occur, that nobody has that in mind. I mean, we don't have to do that. I mean, for example, I don't know if you're doing this. We can do that.
Yeah, but why? You already have three signs.
Exactly. Exactly. And I'm going to get there because you asked, Chair Pramad, you asked, "Why are we doing it?" And the answer, "Why are we doing it?" I haven't gotten there yet because I want to talk about a couple of other things, but I was going to say the reason we're doing it is to do something interesting. And we could do this because those wouldn't be illuminated, but it's boring, so we don't want to do it. So we don't intend to do it indirectly by showing a interesting design up there that's like, kind of artistic squares that might resemble in some tertiary way the Microsoft logo. We could do the Microsoft logo itself, but we're not doing it? No, okay. The question, the question about resolution came up. DOB said, "This is a high-resolution screen that showcases Microsoft's technological prowess." Well, we don't make the screen. The screen is made by a company called Silicon Core, which has nothing to do with Microsoft. Microsoft doesn't promote itself as having a screen that's different from any of its competitors. It does, but not in resolution. Microsoft promotes a touchscreen. And it's one of the few companies that have a touchscreen and Microsoft thinks its touchscreen is better than Apple's touchscreen. So it promotes its touchscreen capabilities, not its resolution, because Microsoft's competitors have similar resolutions. And we can't promote the resolution on the screen here. We don't make it. It's five screens. They're done by the same company that does screens for our competitors and does it for us. So the resolution of screens is not a distinguishing factor for people who are in Microsoft's business.
But the three-dimensionality of the, of the images, I mean, I have to tell you, I, I went at night, I had my husband with me, we stood across the street for about 15 minutes and my husband's going, "Yeah." And for him to do that, trust me--
Did you go into the store though?
It's a big deal. Well, it was, it was pretty late at night. But it's sort of reminiscent of, of the Microsoft technology that they're, they're pushing their virtual, virtual reality glasses hookup thing. I mean, this thing is like, pretty amazing. I've been reading about it. And, and so I understand, you know, the sort of the issue of the resolution of the screen, it's not really the screen, but, but I was, I was caught up in this, this very impressive rendition of, you know, these squares and, and moving, making it look like it's, it's a room. It starts to, you know, look like you're really in a room and then the ceiling goes up and the walls go out. And, and then, you know, reading up on Microsoft and what they're doing, I'm beginning to see where there is that connection. There is the nexus in sort of the technology of what you're looking at and the possibilities that Microsoft can, can give you in terms of this technology. So maybe you could--
Well, you know, we're kind of limited in what we're doing because as Commissioner Alvin Brown said, we're trying not to be too adventurous because his DOB had turned down on the termination. We already constructed the screen--
It's pretty, it's pretty impressive even if you're not adventurous. But when you get adventurous, don't you think that you, that that technology would be sort of announcing what Microsoft does? That's what it does. It, it creates these impressive pictures.
Well, okay, let's say, let's pick up on that point. Let's say that there are some impressive pictures up there. You're saying that that's advertising Microsoft's capabilities because it has impressive pictures up there and--
Well, it's, it's sort of, sorry, it's sort of, it's, it's, it's advertising what Microsoft is in business for, right? They, they do this. They create technologies that are, you know, impressive. Otherwise, why would they create technology?
Images derived from other people.
No, but so that's a question. What, maybe we misunderstand because Microsoft is all around us, it's ubiquitous. I have, you know, logos here that say Microsoft. What, what does, what are Microsoft's products? I mean, right? For example. I mean, are Microsoft's products images? Do they make it possible for me to get a good image on my computer, for example?
Well, I don't think so, but we have a Microsoft representative here who will speak to that point once I finish. I'm almost finished. So we're almost ready to address that point.
You don't have to rush, we, you know.
Because you, you also said, "So why are they doing this?" What is this about? I mean, if, if it's not promoting Microsoft products, and I really should ask the question about whether it was, but if it's not doing it, and we don't think it is, why are we doing it? Well, we, what we did to make it clear is we did go to some effort to do this. The third and fourth floor were limestone. We took them down so we could do this. This is important for us to do it. And we did it because we wanted to have something interesting. This is Microsoft's flagship store in the world. It has twice as much, at least twice as much selling space than any other store it has in the world. And as I hear somewhat ruefully, and they pay 10 times the rent here that they pay any other store in the world. So they wanted to do something interesting. Now what could you do? It's not a new building. They couldn't do what the LVMH people did on West 57, on East 57th Street, just to the west of Madison, hire Christian to Portson Park to do, you don't like that building? They didn't do an interesting building. They couldn't do what Apple did on 59th Street in front of the GM building and build an interesting cube that everybody comes to look at. So they, they did something similar to what Armani did on, on, on West 56th Street on the southeast corner where they have a series of diodes, string diodes that come down above the second floor and flash different color lights. This was their contribution to the area to do something different and do something interesting. And not just display some more Microsoft unilluminated logos. That's what they wanted to do, something interesting. They weren't trying to show any particular technological prowess because I don't think that's not what they do. And that showed different images on screens that are made by others with programs that everybody can get from whoever. When they wanted to show cultural aspects from around the world, those were not going to be images that were special to them. It was just going to be, so when people walked down the street, instead of seeing some limestone on the third and fourth floor, they would see something interesting. And they would be contributing to the architectural trends and interest in the area. That's why they did it. And from what I hear, it hasn't brought in any more customers that they don't think. That people would, in other ways, people aren't going to be walking across the street where you see it, mostly from across the street, and say, "Hey, that's an interesting image, I'm going to go into the Microsoft store." They go into the Microsoft store because they want to buy a Microsoft product and not because they've seen something, an interesting image that's on the third and fourth floor on a screen. Now, do you want to hear something about Microsoft products?
Yes, did you go through all of our--
I think I went through, I went through a lot of them and if I've missed any, I wasn't intentional and I'm happy to continue to ask, answer.
And so you don't see this as sort of fitting in to any branding concept?
Excuse me?
You don't see this as fitting into a branding concept by Microsoft?
Well, Microsoft has--
Or become sort of an, you know, an icon. It's iconography mythology kind of thing. Would that feed into it in any, any way down the road here?
Well, branding is, I understood it, they have over 100 stores in the country and they have none that has this. And even their store in Sydney doesn't have this. They have a--
They have other screens though, they have--
They promote their products outside.
Yes, they do.
But this is the only cultural wall that has anywhere in the country. So they're not trying to brand themselves as, as a company that has cultural walls, where if you see a cultural wall, you say, "That must be Microsoft." So the question I think you'd be asking is that they want people to say, "This is iconic." And they would say, "Microsoft in New York has a cultural wall," and that's how they brand themselves? Well, I think they hope people will appreciate it, just like the LVMH building hopes that people may be come to the Dior store because they want to see a beautiful building, or Apple has a queue people will go into, or somebody hires a great architect to do nice design. I think, yes, people are going to make their store interesting architecturally and with facade treatments, with lighting. The Empire State Building, the Helmsley Building, they have interesting lighting. I, I don't know that that's going to random to have one store that has a cultural wall as now people are going to say that Microsoft isn't famous for the things that it's famous for. Instead, they're famous for having a cultural wall on their flagship store.
So if we go kind of back into the history of arguably cultural walls, if I can actually remember, as a kid, there were the Kodak, those Kodak images at Grand Central Station, for instance, a huge image. And what was it about? Everything. But you, you took those images using Kodak film, right? Or the iPhone that is advertising because with your iPhone, you can take that image. So for, for me, you need to distinguish those from this, right? Because there are probably lots and lots of these kinds of panels, where they are within the window, I'm, we're not going to get into that subject, but there's lots and lots of these panels that have projections that are going on all the time with different kinds of images. So how do you either distinguish yourself from those if those are signs, regulated signs, or resemble the ones that have been maybe determined not to be regulated signs? That's the question.
Well, maybe, I remember the Kodak signs very well. They were very attractive. But they were films that were taken by Kodak. And Kodak was displaying the prowess of its cameras and its displays. These displays have nothing to do with Microsoft. They don't, it's not their screens, it's not, they don't have the technology that's displaying that, that's all done by the apparatus of others. They're just trying to do something interesting that people see when they go by. They're not saying, "Look at us, go buy Kodak film, we have, we have wonderful film capabilities." I missed that.
Beautiful, okay. All right. Any other questions?
That's what you're supposed to come to.
Aside from the, the fact, we told you the screen makes the screen, this is this company called Silicon Core. I didn't have time since yesterday to find out the rest of the software. I'll certainly explain every piece of, of apparatus that's used to project the image in a submission I'll make afterwards. I just know the main thing.
It's not a Microsoft.
That's as far as I got since yesterday.
Because I'd be concerned with, "Oh, well, if you want to see what I can do, just go outside."
I'll get more information than submission.
But isn't the software question related to, you have somebody from Microsoft who's going to talk about the products so that we can understand?
Well, we can talk about Microsoft products and what they make, but I, I can try to trace how an image is going to appear on the cultural wall and what Microsoft technology, relationship it has, if any, to that image. I don't have that. I stopped with the screen, knowing that since the question was resolution and I knew I could take care of that because it's not our screen. Between yesterday and today, that's where I am. And I'll get the rest of it for you.
Okay. So, so a big part of it, it's not just resolution, it's to the extent that the image that you see is made possible by Microsoft products that get it up there. Because it would be sort of ironic to be using, say, an Apple product to get it up onto the Microsoft screen, right?
Well, I'll find out about that. But, but even, even if it turns out, which is contrary to what I think is the case, that if Microsoft has some relationship to it, is that something that people, if they're looking at an image of the Eiffel Tower, are going to say, "Hey, you know, Microsoft must have used its technical genius to put up an image of the Eiffel Tower?" Wouldn't they just say, "Hey, you know, that's a, we know what that is?"
No, it would, for me, it would reinforce that Microsoft makes possible fantastic images so that when I'm working in whichever industry I'm working in, if I'm an animator or something, that I'll think of Microsoft as the product to go to to get great, whatever it is, color resolution, whatever, whatever those things are that go to me selecting who my image creator is going to be, my image producer.
Understood. We'll get that information.
Okay.
So, is it appropriate to--
Yeah, yeah, sure.
This is, nice outside in Michelle.
Thank you for the chance to talk today. I'm Michelle Gahar. I'm the general manager of Microsoft retail stores. So I guess two things it sounds like to talk about today. One is, is just generally the products that we've got. And I think the point was made pretty aptly that we're in a lot of different areas, we've got a lot of different businesses that we're in. So if you think about just kind of the store and these are the consumer-focused products, we have recently, in the last three years, come into the, kind of the hardware businesses you think about, Lenovo's and MacBook Air that you're using today, in that kind of form factor. So there's a product out in the market today called Surface and Surface Book. And so we're on Surface, we're on generation four of that product. You can see those in the store if you've ever been in there. Other products that we sell are starting to get into as a wearable, so this Band that I've got, it's a watch-type device. It's things that kind of takes your steps and tells you the time and all that kind of stuff. There is also a part of the store which is, focuses on Xbox. So we sell a gaming console. Some of you may enjoy or not enjoy the fact that you might have this in your house. But a lot of hours get spent on the Xbox console. So that's kind of the hardware business that we're in. We're not really big in the hardware business. That would be more the Lenovo's that you've got, Dell, Asus, Acer, certainly Apple is in the hardware business, much more so than we are. Where we kind of, our roots are and what we specialize in is, is software. You think about a product like Windows, which has been around for a really long time. And it is an operating system. So when you think about Windows, if you look at any of your Lenovo's there, but when you think about Microsoft, Microsoft's on each and every one of those products, there's probably some on yours as well, but maybe not Windows. Although they do say the best PC is a MacBook Air running Windows.
Oh, sure.
That's what they say. I'm not here trying to promote our products. Clarity on our products. So the software we've got is the Office Suite, so Excel, Word, those are important products we've got, and those have been in the marketplace for quite some time. We also have, as we got into gaming with the Xbox, we also had some gaming titles that we brought into the marketplace. Why? Because we didn't have anybody writing to our, our gaming platform. So it was important to start getting some games out there. There's a couple that we've got, one, probably one of the more popular one is Halo. That's a product that is a software product, it's a gaming product, it's unique to--